Welcome to tonight's council meeting, pre-meeting for August 11th, 2025. We have, do we have any questions? I didn't see any on the line today. Do you want to share? We're going to take off 8B because staff has an update to give us before we vote, and that's the only adjustments I think there are.
Correct mayor, so 8B is one of the four consent agenda items tonight, and I think it'd be beneficial for council to hear an update from staff before voting on the second reading of that. So I'll ask that that get taken off consent and then addressed separately.
Perfect. Council, report outs, councilor's idea?
Yeah, went to National Night Out at the downtown and passed out flyers for pavement and paramedics, and talked to lots of people, and it was really fun. And then afterwards, went to Vato's Tacos and had some tacos.
Great way to spend the night. Thanks for going. Counselor Ione?
I went to National Night Out as well. Went to a few different places. I saw Councilor Demas and yourself, but one of them, turnout was great everywhere I went, so that was great. But everyone was so excited to see the police and all. It was nice. I also went to the Police Department Promotion Ceremony. Shout out to Commander Wilson, Sergeant Flores, Sergeant Coswell, Kasewell. It was all well deserved. I want to give my, take this opportunity to thank the police for all they do for our city to keep us safe. And I also went to the push-in ceremony at Station 5 for the ladder truck. There was a good turnout. The kids seemed to enjoy it. So it was all great. Thank you.
Counselor Demas?
I did National Night Out, did a couple with the mayor and some members of our fire department. Had really good response as far as the flyers and our initiative. Then I did also went to the push-in ceremony at Station 5. That was it for me.
Counselor Miller?
So I went to National Night Out as well, did Sheridan Green Neighborhood, and then did a Dr. Cog work session. And that was essentially just updates from Excel regarding their just overall energy plan with respect to expanding green energy and different sources. And I can, I'm not going to go into detail, but I can forward you the PowerPoint presentation if you guys are at all interested. They touched on a little bit their distribution and capacity, but not, it was not the, you know, the main topic.
Of course not.
Of the conversation. So, and then they also went over the regional housing needs assessment. So that will be doing. So not going to update on that, but yeah, I think that was it for the week.
The Station 5 rollout was just fantastic. When they have such traditions and the truck that's retiring and the truck that is replacing it, the truck that's retiring, they use that hose to wash off the new truck. And then they had plenty of towels for all ages to go and wipe it down. And people were being so meticulous, so there was no rust in that engine. But it is beautiful. And interesting note, the back wheels turn where they used to sort of just get pulled. They now have a little bit of radius, so they do turn a little bit. But that's always fun. And the neighborhood is so supportive at Station 5, and they were there, and the kids were there, and everybody had a great time. National Night Out, Chief Hose and I ran around to six different meetings, and people just had wonderful questions. I told you about the lights and fixtures in Highland Greens, and then some citizens were asking about the ambulance med bed. I'm not sure exactly what it's called, that the fire department has, and how can citizens buy a membership into that? So that was discussed. And then Knox Box, and I've never heard of a Knox Box, but I got educated what that is. And for seniors or for anybody, that is a box that's by your door that has to be put up correctly. And I don't remember the company that does it, but anyway, they come out and make sure it's, it's all good. And then you put your home key in there, and the firefighters have a master key to open that if they need to get into your house. So there were people asking about that, and Chief Hose again talked to them about it, but I shared with Jody maybe that and the ambulance piece somehow we could advertise that those are available to our community and how they would be able to get them. I had a Metro Mayor's Transportation Committee Zoom call today. Currently, all charges fees for your bridge and road fees, they are not going to roads and bridges. I'm sure that shocks you. And so they are trying, a group of people are trying to get a bill passed that puts it into the Constitution that fees, the fees and charges that are being made for roads and bridges do go into the Constitution so that people can't just use it wherever they want, and rob Peter to pay Paul. And they have been doing polling, and 70% say they agree. They're tired of, you know, you just putting the money wherever and it never goes. You ask people to vote for things or do different things, and that money doesn't really go for it. And so she said by doing this, I think they would have 900, I don't know, it was a big number, and would help catch them up and stuff. So it, people do get tired when you're charging fees and things, and you can't prove that that money's going places. So you'll probably hear more about that during next year. If they can't get a bill, then they'll put it on the ballot.
Oh, mayor, can I just add one? For the Sheridan Green Neighborhood, because it looks like the demolition of the school has started, and so some of the residents, and I should have mentioned this earlier last week, but they were hoping to have more detail about how long it was going to take and if there could be some signage along the main street, along the streets. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, there's one thing. So I went to the Alto and downtown, but at Alto, Maker Housing is open to distributing. So that might be one area, if they can get those flyers, Jody, they're open to helping out with that. They helped them too. They took flyers and they were handing out to residents.
I can take some stuff down to them. City Manager?
I have a brief report, but I'll do that in the meeting chambers tonight. And I would like to thank Deputy City Manager Barbara Opie for being Acting City Manager last week, and that allowed me to have a vacation week with my family. So that was greatly appreciated, and thank you to all of you. I will get back to you on any inquiries or things that you had that I haven't answered yet, and I'll get back to you within the next day or so on those ones. So thank you for letting me be away for a week. And Barbara, thank you.
It was good. Anything else for the good of the order? Otherwise, we'll see you at 7 o'clock in your seats.
Welcome to tonight's council meeting for August 11th, 2025. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Westminster City Council Meeting of August 11th, 2025. We appreciate your attendance and would like to remind everyone that our meetings are governed by the rules of decorum, which are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect during all meetings, including breaks and transitions. To ensure a welcoming and respectful environment, we kindly ask everyone to adhere to the following expectations: No attendees shall disrupt the meeting; threats and intimidation are strictly prohibited; audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker are not allowed; signs and placards are prohibited inside the chamber; all attendees must remain seated in designated seats and refrain from occupying aisles or blocking doorways. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding as we work together to maintain a productive and respectful meeting. If you are here to speak during public comment, please sign up in the lobby. Sign-up closes at 7:15. If you are here to sign up for our public hearing, that will be at a little bit different time in the agenda. Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia. Counselor Demott.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Haath.
Present.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protim Nermella.
Here.
And Counselor Ireland.
Here.
Do I have a motion to excuse Counselor Carmelia? Counselor Demott?
I would move that we excuse Counselor Carmelia from tonight's meeting.
Mayor Protim?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Counselor Carmelia from tonight's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to consideration of minutes of July 28th. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of July 28th, 2025 city council meeting as presented.
Mayor Protim?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of July 28th, 2025. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to our public comment. The public comment portion is an opportunity for the public to speak to the city council. Each participant will have up to three minutes. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. The city clerk has informed me that we have received...how many emails? Zero emails, just one voicemail. Okay. And so would you please call the first person? The first speaker is Linda Bova. Welcome.
Thank you. Handout. It starts with five key factors. So, good evening, council. I'm Linda Bova, and I'm here to represent the Westy Dog Park Guardians. There are a few of us here to talk to you tonight about the dog park and the Women Creek property west of the dog park. As you all know, the bridge over Indiana Street connecting Rocky Flats and Westminster's open space has been completed and is now open. The Guardians continue to be concerned about safety in the dog park, especially on the Greenway Trail, which is the most highly-used trail in the dog park for families, older adults, and visitors with disabilities. We are aware that we've brought this issue to you before, but hope by our comments tonight that you might consider things with a different focus. The dog park in its current acreage has been used since 2009. In 2017, when the Greenway Trail was constructed, there was community feedback already expressing concern about encouraging cyclists through an off-leash dog area. The initial concern has proven true with the popularity of the dog park today. The different focus to consider is this: There are five key facts that have changed since the Greenway Trail was developed. Number one, COVID brought an exponential increase of visitors to the dog park. Two, the council voted July 2024 to codify the off-leash area into Westminster Municipal Code. Three, council voted to withdraw from the Indiana Street Bridge crossing. Four, council directed no changes to be made to existing social trails on the Women Creek property. The burying owl has been observed also on Women Creek property this year. We are aware the dog park's area management plan is currently in the first stage. We believe it would be detrimental to wait until after the management plan is completed to address the pedestrian, dog, cycling, and environmental conflicts affecting both the dog park and the Women Creek property. We believe now is the time to address it. It's becoming clear that if Westminster does not do anything about the recycling bicycle traffic on Women Creek property, it is not good for anyone. It's not good for the dog park users, the cyclists, the owls, nor the open-space-sensitive habitat. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cindy Stoudt.
Hi, Mayor Protim and councilors. I'm Cindy Stoudt. I'm here to present you the official proposal from the Westy Dog Park Guardians regarding long-distance cycling traffic as it interacts between the dog park and the Women Creek property. I'd like to point out some highlights on the handout you just got. I obviously am not going to read that to you. That'd be awful. On the first page, just the highlights, please note, we're proposing a decision be made now to redirect long-distance cyclists away from the current one-mile stretch of the Greenway located in the dog park. In addition, we ask that a permanent final reroute of cycling traffic be addressed within the area management plan. The map on page one shows the current conflict area marked in black. On page two, because the Guardians are asking long-distance cyclists be directed away from the trail within the dog park, we propose the following route, as is indicated on the map on page two in yellow. From the bridge, cycling traffic would go south on the trail which parallels Indiana Street and then continue east until it connects to the concrete path paralleling 100th. As you can see by the highlighted text, this would require access through or around the city's maintenance road, but that appears to be a viable solution at this point. In addition, cyclists have the option always to use the newly-paved bike lanes on Indiana Street. If you go to page three, items to consider in your decision are: Number one, redirecting cycling traffic would reduce user conflicts, reduce the risk of plutonium-contaminated soil being brought into the dog park, and address Westminster Strategic Plan Priority III devoted to community health and safety. The second point, the bridge opening, which has created additional cycling through the park, has made that one-mile Greenway Trail through the park unsafe for all users. The third one, regarding the Women Creek property agreement, there are absolutely no requirements in that agreement to provide access to the existing one-mile Greenway Trail within the dog park. A slight detour appears acceptable. Lastly, at the bottom of page three and into page four, allowing cyclists to continue using or create new undesignated trails on the north side of the Women Creek property is at odds with the presence of the burrowing owls confirmed on site. CDW requires a buffer zone for the owls, and Westminster has the legal right to restrict cycling and pedestrian access. Last, on page five, alternately, you could choose to maintain the status quo. We believe this could cause additional unauthorized trails on the Women Creek property, violate the buffer zone, and put the city at risk for potential liability for user conflicts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Beth McBride. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm kind of wrapping up this. We have a series of questions that came up and discussions that we all had, and we wanted to address these to you all. Linda, first of all, Linda handed out to you the combined list of key facts and questions from our team and other dog park users. We hope this information can contribute to a dialogue about the traffic patterns for pedestrians, dogs, bicycles, while also taking into account sensitive habitat considerations. We do want to reiterate that our concern is for the addition of the long-distance cyclists and mountain bikers coming from or going to Rocky Flats area, not necessarily people that are in the park with their dogs, is their regular users of the park that way. Questions have come up in our group and here that some of them are followed, just kind of a summary. Question one is, we know the dog park trail system will be worked on in the area management plan. The question is, is redirecting cycling traffic around the perimeter of the open space, as we proposed, something that can be done independent of the area management plan? Question two says, taking into account the five key facts that you received affecting the Greenway Trail that have changed, does it make sense anymore to continue with the original Greenway Trail configuration diagonally that cuts right through the dog park? Question number three, if the original Greenway Trail alignment on Women Creek property stayed the same it is now, wouldn't legal problems occur for threatened species referenced in the Women Creek property agreement? And number four, we're hoping you will agree to work with the Guardians and cycling community to agree on appropriate signage, warning of the rights of way, and potential user conflicts in order to safely safeguard...oh, excuse me, to provide safe, clear, responsible passage to both areas for user safety. And I will go off script a little bit and just say that if you have not read the Colorado Sun article, I highly recommend it. It's a real thorough report. Last, we're asking, we ask that the Guardians' proposal and accompanying questions be an important consideration as you receive Director Altselberger's...I knew I was going to do that...AMP update at next week's study session. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sherri Griffin. Welcome. Hello, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, and staff. My name is Sherry Griffin. Tonight, I finally get to talk about goats as an environmentally sound management plan for the weeds at the Dog Park and Who's. Goats are funny, they are friendly, and they usually like a good head scratch. For a special treat, I like to bring them old carrots and spinach whenever I visit the farm. Maybe you've seen the baby goat videos where they're hopping all over the place, or maybe the YouTube of Penny, the State Farm goat. Have you guys ever seen her? In addition to being fun, friendly, and frisky, a few goat facts are, goats reduce fossil fuel consumption. Unlike mechanical methods of weed management, they don't pollute the air, except they are a little stinky, especially a herd of them. Goats eat noxious plants. Goats eliminate the use of harmful herbicides and pesticides. Goats are good for fire mitigation. They eat the dry stuff before the fire season starts. Goat grazing does not leave a thatch layer like mowing does. Goats hooves till and aerate the soil and trample in their own fertilizer. Widespread mowing was just done at the Dog Park last Thursday after all the weeds had gone to seed. Unlike mowing, an often overlooked benefit of goat grazing is the sterilization of the seeds. As goats digest the plants, they also process the seeds, preventing them from spreading and potentially causing future overgrowth issues. Goat grazing is not merely a solution, it is part of a holistic approach to landscape management that encourages biodiversity and sustainability. Goats are already being used at Stanley Lake. They were just there in June, and boy, were they stinky, but it was so much fun to watch them climb up the trees to eat the leaves. Lawnmowers are stinky too, but nobody is ever standing around watching them do their job saying how cute they are. Goat grazing could be used for educational purposes, like the other educational events the Parks Department holds. I understand that goat grazing isn't cheap. However, the $210,000 contract for an area management plan for the Dog Park with a community outreach budget of $50,543 could pay for a lot of goat grazing. In addition, it could be utilized to figure out a solution to the Greenway Trail and its impact on off-leash dogs and cyclists instead of what is currently in the proposal, an extensive community outreach campaign for something that was decided last year. The relevant pages from the Mundus Bishop Contract and Proposal, along with a legal analysis, are in the packet that I also emailed to you. It could also be utilized to figure out how the Greenway Trail can be realigned in Who's to avoid the sensitive habitat area. But I wanted to finish with a fun thing, the baby goat stuffies. I hope they make you chuckle and smile. You deserve a smile in between all of the serious stuff like finding money to fix the roads and fund the fire department. Thanks for always listening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jessica Johnson. Welcome.
Hi, Mayor McNally, Pro Tem, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity for community feedback. My name is Jessica Johnson, and I live at 7340 Winona Court in 80030. I am motivated to speak up today after a very recent and frustrating experience with a homeless camp on the little Dry Creek Winona Ditch bike path in adjacent open space next to the Kennedy Park Ballpark. Give you a little timeline. Wednesday, September 30th, Thursday, August 1st, camp shows up. He starts a fire in a fire pit with visible flames from at least 75 yards away. Fire department and non-emergency police are called and do extinguish the fire, but he is not relocated. Friday, August 2nd, he is seen bathing in the ditch, walking around in his underwear. He starts a second fire in his fire pit. My husband calls non-emergency. Fire department arrives and does not extinguish the fire. They leave without changing anything. A fire, open flames, 95-degree day, right up against the open space. This has to be a bigger issue than it was treated. Did we learn nothing from Marshall, honestly? Saturday, August 3rd, concern is growing. He's still using open flames to cook food, and a second tent has been erected. It should be noted that at least one person camping here had access to a vehicle parked on the north side of the park and had an ability to quickly relocate. Multiple contact attempts have been made at this point to Westminster PD, non-emergency, access Westminster portal, emails for the deputy city manager, Barbara Opie, and still no effort to assuage our concerns that actionable steps to relocate this man safely to a safer alternative were being taken. "It'll happens when it happens" was essentially the dismissive response we all received. As my neighbor wrote to the deputy city manager, quote, "We understand and sympathize with the broader issues surrounding homelessness, but the current situation is creating a public safety risk and damaging the local environment," end quote. The reply estimation was that there was nothing the Rangers could do since he was working to secure housing. Is this the response now? Anyone experiencing homelessness can just say, "I promise I'm working on it. I'll be gone soon," and they get an unlimited pass to live wherever they so choose. Personally, I find this to be completely unacceptable. The city's uninspired pace to mitigate the immediate fire danger this man posed to the people who live across the street, mere yards from him, was astonishing. The days that week were in the high 90s, zero rain we've had in weeks until recently, and incredibly dry brush and debris all around. Per reports in the portal, you can see it was reported, there were dogs without leashes, open containers, loud vocal disturbances late at night, blocking of the path, negatively impacting the lives of our senior citizens who live nearby at a center. They could not walk around their complex, not to mention every other recreator who uses that path for their dogs, cycling, et cetera. He remained there until sometime late Tuesday afternoon, August 6th, almost a week later. I have more, but I will send it in an email, so thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sherry McNabb. Welcome.
I currently represent Spanish Oaks condominium association on 73rd and Sheridan. We have ongoing concerns about disruptive noises originating from Sheridan Boulevard and 73rd, safety issues crossing the streets, as well as the homeless and drug-related activity in the area. The high-speed activity on both roads, this is very concerning, given the roadwork being currently performed on 73rd. I myself can't make it across Sheridan before the hand signal stops flashing, and I am not necessarily slow, not fast, but not slow. The persistent high-traffic noise during the day and especially at night, you can hear the cars racing, you can hear the motorcycles, and for the people who live on the west end, it is very noisy and disrupts sleep. Ongoing homeless and drug activity along 73rd and within our community, they come through our community, they go to a specific unit with flashlights, they're there all hours of the night. We're concerned for the parents that live there, and I addressed this with the police, and I've had other homeowners say that they've called the police regarding this. We'd like to ask that the city increase enforcement of speed limits in the area, conduct a noise impact study on Sheridan, and explore sound mitigation options, implement regular drive-throughs from the police to address hotspots of homeless and drug-related activities, and engage the community on a public forum to gather firsthand information. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jerry Mahabab. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. Nice to see you all again. Thank you to the Lord for allowing me to be alive today to present. As a reminder, my name is Jerry Mahabab. I return to you not only as a Christian pastor, a technologist, a software executive for over 27 years, and an advocate for the homeless, but as an unhoused homeless resident of Westminster. I was just talking about the homeless, and I submitted a proposal, I think you received it, and I got a response from you earlier today. Still enduring the almost unbearable, still testifying, still praying day and night, still building solutions to help you resolve some very big problems with the current system in place to help the homeless by substantially easing their suffering and misery, not barely doing anything. Proverbs 21:3 says, "To do righteousness and justice is more acceptable to the Lord than sacrifice." Tonight, you're being asked not for optics, which are an abomination to God, but for obedience, courage, and compassion. Two weeks ago, I laid out the human cost of our current system, which is broken navigation, blocked hygiene access, and the moral vacuum caused by neglect. Since then, I've worked day and night to construct a complete reform proposal, sent to you guys earlier today, not single-handedly, but with Jehovah's guidance and prayer through Christ our Lord and Savior. Regardless of your beliefs, mark my words, Jehovah believes in you, or I would not be here. About the proposal sent via email earlier today, Section 2 delivers a weekly hotel shelter pilot to eliminate the most damaging bottleneck, hygiene deprivation. A week and a half ago, I was hospitalized for having a staph infection. It can start immediately with willing motels and off-the-shelf tools, no new construction, no years of planning, just coordination, urgency, and moral courage. Section 3 deploys something I call the RTIRS, Real-Time Infrastructure that routes people based on actual need, validates outcomes, and eliminates manipulation or waste. No more guessing, no more gaming the system. Section 4 invokes legal authority, defines agency roles, and activates emergency and strategic funding through map pathways and active oversight. Section 5 builds permanence, stabilization villages anchored by a division of homeless system reform, so progress isn't lost and relapses prevented. Together, this packet forms a closed loop from emergency to scalability to oversight to stabilization. Locked by signed MOUs, which is how I have noticed you guys do things, vetted budgets, master references, and executable flow charts. This is more than policy, it's a divine obligation, a fiduciary responsibility, and a moral imperative to the people of Westminster, especially the community who are being bothered by these homeless people, especially those still unsheltered, like myself. Scripture is clear, whoever represses the poor shows contempt for their maker, but whoever is kind to the needy honors God, it's Proverbs 14:31. Isaiah 58 commands us to loose the chains of injustice and shelter the wanderer, and James 2 warns us that faith without deeds is dead, and tonight, those deeds are within reach if you act. The spirit of the realm is very real. Act now, approve Part 1 as soon as you can. Let Westminster be remembered not as a pharaoh's court, but as a council that chose decisive mercy with righteous urgency. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Craig Russell. Welcome.
Thank you, council. It's good to be here. Thank you very much. I'm kind of curious who's in charge on some things. We started a systematic rental inspection advisory committee back in July 18th of this year, and we had an agenda every month. We met, and it was supposed to end in March with a draft to present to the city council on some of the changes that were being requested and updated, because this thing was started 20 years ago by only staff, without any input from the public, without any input from the tenants, without any input from the landlords. It got sidetracked. It got defunded, derailed, whatever you want to call it, in about December, and didn't go anymore after that, and then the ball got completely dropped, because in April and May, they changed it from anything that had anything to do with the systematic inspection to av-hoc type thing, where they were just going to talk about maybe being able to help people that are needy or want something or anything else. We, the last, the first av-hoc one, though, they did talk about the structures and rates and water utility rates, which are very unfair for rental people that are paying three times the amount of any homeowner's paying. And they came up with the last meeting, which we just had, that they're going to do studies on that, and maybe in a year or so, we might be able to do something about it. I really expected this council to be able to do something before it's time to be reelected, so I would know that this is the council I want to keep on this board and support, because so far, I voted for pretty much all of you when you first started, and I have high expectations, and I wanted to keep that. But again, I wonder who's in charge, because it's not the council, apparently, unless the council has given direction not to have this continue on. So it must be the city manager, unless the city manager has given direction to his staff not to have this systematic inspection going on, or not to allow the committee to go ahead and voice their opinion and bring up a draft to the council. Or maybe it's just the staff itself saying, well, we don't have time and we don't really care, but we're in charge, because no one's given us clear direction that this is to be done and to be finished and to be presented to the city council in a timely manner, as it was proposed when it was first done in July. So I would like to know from the city, city staff, who is in charge of this and why it was derailed? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Lambo. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Hello to Westminster. It's good to be in front of you again. I'm Tom Lambo, and I'm here to lift up Westminster to the Lord in prayer, so please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we invite you here to the city of Westminster. You are always welcome here. This is your city. In Exodus 15:2, it states, "The Lord is my strength and my defense; he has become my salvation. He is my God, and I will praise him. My Father is God, and I will exalt him." We give you praise, glory, and honor because of everything you are to us. You created everything, and there is nothing greater than you, and we are honored that you would be with us. Father, we want to lift up the volunteers within our city. Some are recognized because of the boards they sit on or the positions they hold, while others just quietly go about their days doing what they do without recognition or fanfare. At any capacity, volunteers give of themselves to benefit others. You have blessed all of us with many gifts, and in 1 Peter 4:10, you state, "Each of you should use whatever gifts you have received to serve others as faithful stewards of God's grace in various forms." Thank you for the blessings we are given, and thank you for inspiring individuals to serve others. Father, it's time to lift up all those members of our society who are heading to school. For some, it will be the first time entering the schools. For others, it will be the same experience, just in a different environment. And for others, this will be the beginning to a conclusion to a major milestone in their lives. But whatever they are, or but wherever they are, we lift them up to you and ask that you would bless and keep them. Bless them with knowledge and the ability to use it, keep them sharp and focused and away from harm. The dynamics of their days are about to change. Their focus will need to change from one of leisure to a more structured day. Give them a renewed outlook on what is before them. Bless them with Joshua 1:9. "If an act commanded you, be strong and courageous. Do not be frightened, do not be dismayed, for the Lord your God is with you wherever you go." Help the students walk in peace and strength, and without hesitation or inhibition, to take on the adventures in front of them. You are God, and we are your people. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jim Fenimore.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, Jody, Barb. I'd like to take and give kudos out to the fire department. They served with mutual aid to a fire that was down off of about 64th and Federal at the end of last week. They were able to contain that fire to the garage, kept other structures, commercial buildings and other residents right there in the area from burning down, so kudos. Also like to give the kudos out to the police department, because the guys seem to be fairly observant. I was, I've been out on tour, cruising the city, doing, hitting the open spaces in the parks, looking at all the great places that we have here in the city, and just enjoying them. And I've seen a couple officers, and they've looked at me, and I'm looking around, walking around, they probably think I'm lost, maybe. At any rate, I give them the thumbs up, I'm okay, and they thumbs back, so they're just checking on me, making sure I'm doing okay. So thanks to them. Also, went to this concert up at the Orchard here a couple weeks ago, and Station 6 was up there, along with the police department, and they were very friendly, visited with us, took the time to just get to know each other a little bit and be friendly, so that's nice to be able to experience with the police and fire department, so kudos for that. Something that I need to bring forward, John Palmer would have normally brought this to your attention, but up on the uplands, there's signs along Federal that are six by eight, additional signs for advertisement. I know that we agreed to have I know that we agreed to have additional signs put up on the corners, but all of a sudden, these great big signs showed up along with the existing ones that are there. So not sure what is going on with that. Then, something that, real quick, is I do respect the homeless and their needs and concerns and things. But last Tuesday, a group of us were sitting up at Nava Coffee Shop on 104th and Federal, and a homeless guy came through the parking lot cussing, ranting, raving, being a jerk, had a stolen bicycle in his cart, went by us, muttered some words to us, went on around the building. Next thing I know, the lady that manages, the owner of Nava, comes out and goes, "Did you guys see what he just did?" And it's like, no, went around. He put FU across the dead building. Then I heard some pounding and stuff, and the other guys went back, and I stayed out front. He's down on the opposite end, not only just putting FU on there, he spared the whole thing out. And then the building is constructed of drive-it, which is of fiberglass or styrofoam with a simulated texture of stucco. Takes something, smashes a big hole in the drive-it. So I did call the police department.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council. First, I'd like to thank all of the folks who came out tonight to speak. We do listen, staff listens, city council listens. And we will follow up with anyone who has asked for follow-up tonight. And a lot of great feedback tonight on many topics. So we'll do our follow-up on what you've asked about and what you've raised tonight. Next slide, please. By way of community update on our paramedics and pavement engagement efforts, we have sent out and are sending out the second of two rounds of mailers this August. The first mailer went out in the first week or so and introduced the need for us to engage the community around our fire department needs and our street needs. And the second mailer, which is on its way out over the coming week or so, will introduce the proposed ballot language that city council has been working on with staff. And so that will be coming out, so please watch for that second round of mailers to you. What's important, this month is by August 25th. Once the ballot language has been formally considered by city council, the city will conclude its community engagement efforts on that date and shift into providing factual information and such in response to questions. And so I just want to clarify, we have a second mailer coming out. But after August 25th, that's when the city no longer will be sending out those kinds of things, and we'll be looking to the community to carry anything forward from that point. Next slide, please. I also want to update the community. That Squires Park is getting ready for its grand reopening. So the community, both the local neighborhood and anyone from Westminster, is welcome to join in the celebration. There will be free ice cream, and you'll have a look at the new amenities there, universally accessible play elements, which exceed ADA guidelines. There are expanded trails and an off-leash dog area. And of course, the renovated pavilion, if you haven't seen it yet, is quite something. So that will happen on Thursday, August 14th, and that runs from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. right at Squires Park. So that's 3450 West 99th. Next slide, please. On tonight's agenda, we have four consent agenda items. I'm going to ask that one of those consent agenda items, 8B, is removed from consent, and then I'll ask staff to provide an update on that item before city council considers its vote on that one. We also have tonight a public hearing, and that's a consideration of an ODP for Uplands filing 2, Block 2, PAB2. So any folks who came tonight, there is a public hearing and testimony opportunity coming up for that one. And then on new business, there are two items. The first reading of Bill Number 24, which is the supplemental appropriation to the 2025 General Capital Improvement Fund for Westminster Station RAP repurchase. And the second is the first reading of Counselor's Bill 25, and that's a supplemental appropriation of funds for the 2025 Capital Improvement Fund for Fire Station 8. We also have a Westminster Economic Development Authority public hearing meeting tonight, and that is Resolution 242, which is the companion to the city council item, and that's a supplemental appropriation of funds for that Fire Station 8 project. Next slide, please. This week coming up, so tomorrow night, Tuesday, August 12th, is our Planning Commission meeting. That's right here at City Hall from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. On Wednesday this week, the 13th, is Lunch and Learn, Introduction to LinkedIn for Businesses. And that's being hosted by the Westminster Chamber of Commerce at 8845 Eaton Street, so downtown Westminster, and that will run from noon to 1:00 p.m. Also, on Wednesday, the inclusivity board is meeting at Westminster City Hall. That's also a hybrid meeting that starts at 6:00 p.m. And then Youth Advisory Panel Meeting, also at Westminster City Hall, starting at 6:00 p.m. That's all on Wednesday. Next slide, please. On Thursday is the Squires Park Grand Reopening, again at 3:00, right at Squires Park. Saturday, August 16th this week, the Westminster History Tour and Westminster Landmarks and Hidden Historic Treasures, and that runs from 9:00 a.m. to noon. There's also a pet vaccination clinic happening at the Westview Recreation Center. That's at 10747 West 108th Avenue. That's 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That's a great resource for anybody interested in learning more about and getting your pets vaccinated. And then on Saturday, also a downtown summer activation series event, Kids Zone on the Plaza, that's in downtown Westminster, running from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then finally, this week, on Sunday, August 17th, there's a photo from a past event, Third Annual Swashbuckler Regatta. That's right at Stanley Lake, and that will run all the way through from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Stanley Lake. Next slide, please. So for our next meeting of city council, we do have a full agenda. It's a study session meeting, and that's August 18th. That begins at 6:30 right here. There are three information-only items. The 2026 City Council Proposed Sponsorships will be up. Human Services Board 2026 Grant Award Recommendations. And as mentioned by speaker tonight, Westminster Hills Open Space Dog Off-Leash Natural Area Management Plan Update. I'd asked for a longer name than that, but that was as long as they could come up with. So we will have an information-only item on that next week. Presentations, there will be four. Butterfly Pavilion Operations and Goals Update. So we do have our friends from the Butterfly Pavilion coming in next Monday. We also have Denver Regional Council of Government, or Dr. Cog, Regional Housing Needs Assessment Presentation. We have a concept plan review. There are two that night. The first will be for Kaiser North. That's a replacement medical office building. And also a concept plan review for the addition of a land use for Dogtopia within the Bent Cross Shops subdivision. And finally, an executive session of the Westminster Economic Development Authority, and that will be providing direction for a proposed development agreement and discussion of a possible sale of Weta-owned property located on Block D5 in downtown Westminster. Next slide, please. You can contact the city at any time using our Access Westminster app, and we're still fine-tuning that. So we do continue to encourage people to use that. That's westminsterco.gov/AccessWestminster, or get the app for your smartphone if you have one. You can phone the city anytime during our office hours, 303-658-2400. And our website is westminsterco.gov. And if you don't know, we have four social media platforms, Facebook, Instagram, X, and Nextdoor as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions for city manager? Counselor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, can you address the question, no, two different questions. One related to the rental inspection and what happened there? If you can give an update. And the other related to the scope of the management plan, if that includes the rerouting that was talked about?
Thank you for the questions. We'll follow up with the speaker regarding the Rental Housing Committee. I believe that was a reference to the reconstituted committee being more inclusive of other stakeholders than it had originally been in place. And that may be the reference to a change of pace and scope there. So we will follow up with Mr. Russell and make sure. I believe he's involved in that group, so we will make sure that there's continuity there and that we have a shared vision on what that newly constituted committee is working on. And with respect to the area management plan, I've not yet reviewed the update. That's going to post this Wednesday. So we'll go through that with staff over the next couple of days to see what's included in that work. I had asked that it primarily be a process and schedule update, so folks know where the process is at and where we're standing with the timeline and how the engagement opportunities are being structured. Having said that, we hear from a number of speakers tonight around some specific recommendations of a more timely nature. So those are the things that I'll be talking with staff about over the next two working days.
Anything else? Counselor Ireland?
Thank you for addressing all those of the same things I was thinking. Thank you.
City council reports. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind the public that next Wednesday, the 20th, at 5:00 o'clock, is my town hall that I do monthly, Policy and Pilsner at Cocopelli Beer Company. So if you want to come and join us for a pint or some pizza, or, in the mayor's case, a soda, we'll be there from 5:00 to 6:00. And then I wanted to quickly just recognize a loss that I heard from one of our neighboring communities, the North Glen Police Department. I read tonight that Detective Paul Gessi died after a long battle with PTSD, which was suicide, which, as they wrote on this post, all too often, that affects both military vets, our police officers, our firefighters, who go and see a lot of bad things in our community as they serve us. And so I just want to recognize him. He also, this came as a shock to me, because he used to be my neighbor. His family grew up across the street from mine. So my heart and prayers go out to his family, as well as our first responders, because I know many of them knew him, and as well as their community. And I would ask that you do the same.
Seeing anything else that brings us to consent agenda? And as city manager said, we're pulling off 8B, so do I have a motion for 8A, C, and D? Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items 8A, C, and D.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve items 8A, C, and D. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Haat?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. And that brings us to Council Bill Number 23. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could ask Lindsay Kimball to come up to the podium Mayor, we'll just pause a moment, because the next item is public hearing, so we don't want to start that and have to pause that.
Yeah. It's okay.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilors. Lindsay Kimball, Community Services Director. Wanted to give you just a quick update on the status of the Midland Building. As you may remember, on July 28th, the deputy city manager, Larry Door, covered an update on the building, and this is a two-week update to add on to that update that he provided. And as he mentioned, we have two paths. We have Plan A, which is continue, to allow the owner to submit plans to the city and try to keep the project moving forward. And B is to pursue an abatement of the nuisance that's been caused by the property. Upon onsite inspection completed by the chief building official on July 14th at 10:00 a.m., she found four hazardous and substandard conditions. That was that it's unfit for human habitation. It's a public nuisance. There was unsecured vacant structure and abandonment. The notice of violation for the unsafe building and immediate attention required to that notice were served on July 16th. The owner had 10 days from the return of the building plan review comments to abate the unsafe conditions and obtain all applicable permits. Today is that 10th day, and those conditions were not met. Therefore, we wanted to advise you and let you know that we'll continue with our pursuit of A and B, and they're moving simultaneously, same path, different paths, but at the same time. And we are pursuing both any assistance we can provide, help get the project moving and compliant, and also, we are actively pursuing the abatement of the nuisance. So with that, we thank you for your consideration of the item and happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Is there a motion? Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve second reading of Council Bill Number 23, Supplement Appropriation to the 2025 General Capital Improvement Fund for Nuisance Abatement Activities at the Midland Building located at 7255 Irving Street.
Counselor, Mayor Protem?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselor's Bill Number 23. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Demont?
I just want to quickly comment to add on to my comments. The last time we talked about this, this is just further evidence to me that this owner is not serious about remedying the situation with all the opportunities that they were given. So I hope that they change that, but I think this is important for us to continue down both paths, so that if they don't step up, that that building gets removed.
Roll call, please. Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Haat?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
And Counselor Demont?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. That brings us to item 10A, Public Hearing and Consideration of an Official Development Plan for Uplands filing 2, Block 2/PAB2. I will open the public hearing at 7:52. And do we have a staff presentation? Oh, welcome. You just appeared.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city councilors. John McConnell, Planning Manager here tonight, to provide you with an overview of the staff's presentation for this public hearing item. I'll provide some introductory statements, and then turn the full presentation over to Principal Planner Jacob Kaza to follow through. As you're aware from reading the agenda memo, staff is recommending that you hold this public hearing and deny this application. It is rare that staff would be making a recommendation of denial of an official development plan of this scale and nature. Staff always works diligently with applicants in their development plans to reach consensus around compliance with city standards and regulations or reach agreement to support reasonable exceptions to the rules prior to a public hearing of the city council. However, in this case, staff and applicant did not reach consensus despite strong efforts by both parties to do so. I want to affirm to the city council and the public that both parties acted with professionalism, respect, and transparency during the review process. And both intend to present each position in the same manner tonight. Because staff is recommending denial of this application, our presentation contains additional information intended to highlight staff's position, which is outlined in more detail in the agenda memo. As a result, our presentation is lethier than normal. And for that, we apologize in advance. I'll now hand the presentation over to Principal Planner Jacob Kaza. Jacob also managed the development review for this case. And Mr. Kaza will be available, along with myself and other staff, to answer questions after both presentations.
Thank you. And to all presenters tonight, in reading everything, your mind gets boggled very quickly. And to all presenters tonight, in reading everything, your mind gets boggled very quickly. So I would hope everybody talks slowly so that we can get the concepts from both sides of what they're going for. And I don't even know if it's best as we go through the pieces to ask the questions. I know I had questions as I was going through it, and I thought if I have to wait till the whole end, it just was a whole lot. So I understand you're presenting a whole lot, both of you, so just remember, our ears need to hear it from both of you, and we'll proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We'll be there.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and City Council. I'm Jacob Kozza, the Principal Planner for Current Development for the City of Westminster. As a part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices, and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to 2,293 property owners and tenants within 1,000 feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. Seven public notification signs were posted on the subject property, and the city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Here's a map of Block 2 filing number 2 of the Uplands Development. The project site is located on the southwest corner of Lowell Boulevard and Bradburn Drive. This site plan is from Sheet 30 of the ODP. The plan includes 26 custom single-family home lots. Section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 17 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing official development plans. Staff finds that the official development plan does not meet these criteria as outlined in detail in the agenda memo. Criteria 1 requires that the staff be, that the plan be in conformance with all city codes, ordinances, and policies. Staff finds that the plan is not in conformance with the city code. The applicant is required to commit to 3,218 elective points in the single-family detached residential design standards. The applicant is requesting points for elective EDS 7B, which requires reduced pavement width adjacent to a centrally located park. The proposed park is not centrally located and is adjacent to a 26-foot-wide private road. Staff understands the applicant would like to offer an alternative elective so they may meet the point requirement. On screen is an example of the kind of central located park. Criteria 2 requires that the plan be in conformance with the PDP. The applicant is requesting reductions to two setbacks that are required by the PDP. Staff does not find these exceptions to be warranted. Additionally, the proposed alley connection to West 82nd Avenue was not shown on the PDP. Generally, this means that the connections are not allowed on an ODP. Criteria 3 requires that the plan exhibit sound, creative, innovative, or efficient planning and design principles. Staff does not find this requirement to be met. The applicant has told staff that this parcel is only buildable if 26 units can be achieved by the design. This specific unit count has driven the design of the plan, which requires exceptions to planning and engineering standards. 25 of the 26 lots will utilize a walkout home configuration. The single-family detached residential design standards were specifically designed to accommodate densities comparable to the existing adjacent neighborhoods and allowed under the residential low-density designation in the comprehensive plan. Further, this proposed design will connect the private alley with Le Place Court, which the city just closed off due to decades of traffic complaints. Staff have conducted a thorough analysis of the proposed development as it relates to the existing context of Gregory Hill. Staff finds this context area to be within Lowell Boulevard on the east, 80th Avenue on the south, Oakwood Drive on the west, and Bradburn Drive on the north. On the left, you can see the comprehensive plan designations for Gregory Hill. All of the residential properties are designated residential low-density. On the right, you can see the zoning designations for Gregory Hill. All of the homes on Gregor Hill are zoned RE residential estate. This face of Gregory Hill has an existing slope of about 12%. The applicant proposes increasing that slope up to 25% in some areas. Once the walkout homes are designed, the rear yards will be even steeper than currently shown in the plan. On the left side of this image, you can see the setbacks for parcel B1, located directly north of parcel B2. The front and rear setbacks are indicative of a true alley-loaded community meant to act as a density transition. The side setbacks provided in B1 are 7 and 1/2 feet. Contrast that with the proposed setbacks for parcel B2, where the side setbacks are 5 feet. This parcel is much steeper than B1 and is not directly adjacent to an existing higher-density housing development. You may be thinking about all of the previous Uplands applications and wondering what is so different about this application. The difference is context. B2 is located on Gregory Hill, which has an existing character. On the screen now is an aerial image of parcel B1. This property has a gentler slope and an unusual shape. The north and west sides of the property are bordered by Shaw Heights, which is a low-density single-story, single-family detached development. To the northeast is mountain terrace apartments, a high-density apartment complex, and a suburban layout. To the south is Bradburn Drive with B2 and Gregory Hill beyond. Parcel B1 and B2 are both designated residential low-density, but B1 is truly alley-loaded and includes two housing types. Here is parcel D1. It is designated residential medium density. On the north is 84th Avenue with all commercial uses on the north side of the road. To the east is higher-density senior housing in multifamily and single-family units. The multifamily units are up to four stories. To the south is Cobblestone Park. To the southwest is Village of Greenbrier Apartments. This is a two-story multifamily development. To the west is the View Corridor and Federal Boulevard. Here is parcel A. It is designated mixed-use neighborhood. This category allows up to 18 dwelling units an acre and multifamily units. The intended character of this designation is urban-informed, and the setbacks in lot sizes supported by staff reflect that. Parcel A is bounded by roads on all four sides, and I'll skip discussing parcel C as that is only multifamily units. Criteria 4 requires that any exceptions to standard code requirements be warranted by virtue of design or special amenities incorporated in the development proposal. Staff finds that several of the requested exceptions are not warranted by virtue of design or special amenities. First, the applicant is requesting a modified street section. This is solely to preserve unit count. The local road section is intended to be the guest parking for a single-family detached development, as the city parking standards do not require on-lot guest parking. Staff have heard loud and clear from City Council and this commission and the Planning Commission that we need to consider guest parking as well. The proposed road design allows for only 17 parking spaces. No parking is allowed on Newton Court. The second exception staff does not support is for a landscape area reduction. This is only necessary because of the site design. The final exceptions staff do not support are the various proposed reductions to setbacks. The design standards do not include specific lot sizes as we rely on setbacks to achieve lot sizes that are proportional to the sizes of the homes. As a part of staff's analysis, we calculated all of the lot sizes on Gregory Hill and measured all of the existing setbacks through aerial imagery. Gregory Hill is a very unique neighborhood with diverse home designs that have been created over the last 130 years. The smallest lot size on Gregory Hill is 6,586 square feet. The largest lot size is 33,379 square feet, and the average is 13,499 square feet. The applicant proposes a minimum lot size of 4,079 square feet, a maximum of 9,196 square feet, and an average of 5,234 square feet. The average lot size proposed by the applicant is 39% of the size of the average lot in Gregory Hill. The proposed development will have a different character than Gregory Hill. As you might have guessed, Gregory Hill also has unique existing setbacks. Some of the homes were built before the city had a zoning ordinance, while many of the others have setbacks that are used to address the grade. The average setbacks for Gregory Hill are front 36 feet, left side 19 feet, right side 21 feet, and rear 41 feet. The applicant is asking for setbacks tailored to three different lot types. The requested front setbacks are to ensure that any homes designed over 30 feet in height at any point be accessible to a fire aerial apparatus. This, the side setbacks, as previously noted, are requested at 5 feet. The rear setbacks are 15 to 27 feet. The proposed development will have a different character than Gregory Hill. Finally, in order for exceptions to be approved, they must be warranted by virtue of design or special amenities. The applicant has not demonstrated how these are warranted by virtue of design. It is not a true alley-loaded community, nor are we adapting the design standards to fit a level of density that they were not designed for. The PDP did not include any provisions for clustering the homes because of the View Corridor or PLD. This development is simply all front-loaded, single-family detached homes. 25 of the 26 homes will be walkout homes. The plan does not include any special amenities. All the amenities that you see included in the plan are provided either because they are minimum requirements or electives. Criteria 5 requires that the plan be compatible and harmonious with existing development. As staff have explained earlier, we do not find the plan compatible with existing development. During the concept plan review, city council indicated a desire to see the homes address Bradburn Drive. We do not believe this plan achieves that. The homes in B1 will front onto Bradburn Drive with a 44-foot setback. They will look into the rear of two rows of homes going up the slide of, up the slope of Gregory Hill. For criteria 6 and 7, the plan must provide for protection from adverse influences and have no significant adverse impacts. Staff finds that the plan does not provide for the protection of adverse influences and that it does have significant adverse impacts. The proposed alley will connect to the new cul-de-sac on 82nd Avenue. This is contrary to the city's direction to close Le Place Court to through traffic. The alley will be open upon initial construction with a gate that will be locked in the open position. The turnaround in the alley is only sized for a 30-foot box truck. Any larger truck will need to exit through the alley. We have not discussed the many delivery trucks and vans that only follow GPS and will utilize this alley as a cut-through. In the future, if the city were to receive a large number of complaints, the city could direct the HOA to close the gate and limit the access as a mitigation of the traffic impacts. The city's fire department does not support this mitigation effort as it will increase response times even with an automatic opener. Criteria 8 requires the safe and harmonious grouping of structures. Criteria 9 requires that the development standards be in accordance with sound design principles and practice. Staff have already conveyed their reasons for stating the plan does not meet these two criteria. Criteria 10, sorry. Criteria 10 requires the design of the structures to be compatible. The plan includes some architectural standards but leaves a lot of freedom as this is meant to be a custom home development. 25 of the 26 homes will be walkout homes. Criteria 11 requires that screening be provided to address undesirable environmental effects. The two largest environmental effects will be the view of the city's water tanks and the noise from US 36. Criteria 12 requires landscaping be in conformance with city code. Other than the requested exception, the landscaping is adequate. The 12% to 25% slopes in the side and rear yards will be a challenge for future homeowners. Criteria 13 requires the streets be suitable for the traffic. Staff are concerned about the alley connection to West 82nd Avenue and the potential impacts of cut-through traffic. Criteria 14 requires that the streets and drives be designed in a safe and convenient manner. As staff have already mentioned, the alley does not meet this requirement. Criteria 15 requires that pedestrian infrastructure be safe and convenient. The site plan is suburban in nature and will have okay walkability. The transit stops are too far away to expect any of these homeowners to use transit. Criteria 16 requires that the proposed utilities be adequate to serve the development. Staff does not support the utility design as it was dictated by the alley. On the screen, you can see their utility plan from Sheet 21 of Attachment 2. In blue is the proposed waterline connection that is required by the existence of the alley. In red is the staff-preferred connection if the alley were not included. The applicant's design requires a connection that is five times longer. Finally, Criteria 17 requires that the applicant is not in default and does not have outstanding obligations to the city. The applicant is currently meeting all requirements, however, they have not provided a timeline to the city for when they would construct the commercial component in parcel A, nor the clubhouse and pool amenities that are required by the preliminary development plan. Those are required before the issuance of the 1,176 residential unit. With this ODP, Uplands will be fully entitled for 1,330 residential units. Staff recommends that the city council hold a public hearing and deny the ODP. Planning Commission voted in favor of recommendation for approval 4 to 1. And staff finds that a recommendation of denial of the application would meet the city's strategic plan priorities, access to opportunity, and resilient infrastructure as the development proposal lacks diverse housing choices and includes inefficient provision of public infrastructure. The applicant is with us tonight, and they have a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council members, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Marcus Pockner. I'm a land use and community outreach consultant. Correspondingly to that great presentation by John and Jacob, we will also probably have a little bit more detailed presentation to try to answer some of those. I also probably, at the mayor's request earlier, will slow down at a couple of points to basically show what the alternative site plan is. What you have basically heard leads to an alternative site plan. So we are really talking about two different versions of a plan that could be built on this site, and I'll talk about that in more detail. So as we always do on Uplands, we give an overall update on the proposal and the rest of the community. So I just want to point out here tonight that just showing this in context, we have had 11 neighborhoods now approved in Uplands. We are 84% approve the neighborhoods that are approved. This is the 12th neighborhood that we are bringing forward, and there's a very specific reason for that. We knew that this conversation was inevitable. This is a very difficult and challenging site. It's actually the first neighborhood meeting. You'll hear from a number of neighbors here. We heard our first, held our first meeting in Gregory Hill and Observatory Torrey Heights with many of these neighbors, and this will be a continued discussion about this site because of the challenge of this site. I also want to be sure and talk about just the discussion about what we're trying to define, the compatibility, we believe, is with all of the surrounding neighborhoods, and understanding the context and how the consistent vision of Uplands we absolutely meet and exceed this evening. I do want to show the pertinent infrastructure. I won't talk about all the infrastructure, but this shows really the Lowell and Bradburn. As you see on Bradburn and forming a right triangle around this site, we are required to provide an 8-foot sidewalk all around the site and connecting it out to Lowell. That was in the PDP based on the addition of 26 units on this site. That was the commitment here that was promised and that and why the infrastructure was so designed. So it shows again the surrounding infrastructure of this site as well. The context, Jacob did a great job. Everybody understands this, the site as it relates to B1, which is under construction right now, and the overall context of the neighborhoods. I do want to just start with a reminder to City Council the consistency of what we have proposed. This is what we proposed at concept review 18 months ago. Since then, there have been very substantial additions, including B1, where we voluntarily agreed to solve the Le Place Court issue that was mentioned earlier and the infrastructure challenges in B1, so we could address that upfront for the Gregory Hill neighborhood. So that's already embedded and being built today. I want to point out a couple of things that were important to City Council as reminders, that access to Gregory Hill neighborhood be limited, that there wouldn't be true access there because Le Place Court was being shut off. We've implemented that. It was incredibly important to this council that there be positive density transition. You specifically noted that this needed to be density transition from all the surrounding contexts. That was a very important thing. You did tell us to pay attention to the alley configuration. We have done that. We have preferred it. We have tailored it more specifically. We have not removed it. That is the alternative that is being proposed tonight. We also were cognizant of lot size and setbacks. So again, completely consistent with that concept 18 months ago. Why are we moving forward, as John did such a nice job of saying? Why are we here tonight with a negative staff recommendation? We have done 22 site plans on this site, 22 site plans. We know we cannot come to a place with staff where we will have an opinion that could support it unless we drop to 8 to 10 units. This neighborhood doesn't get built with 8 to 10 units. That's the reality of the layout of the site. So that's the challenge, and we'll talk about how that comes together. I just want to show you how consistent we have been with the approval criteria and probably most importantly, how consistent City Council and Planning Commission have been. You have voted for this plan on three occasions. The first was the comp plan amendment. We did a specific comp plan amendment for B2 in 2020. We then went further and codified that commitment in 2021 with the PDP and set a maximum of 26 units on this site. We then justified on that planning, put in infrastructure to plan all of the surrounding and solve those challenges, and then the B1 site plan was approved. All three of those going through the process, consistent with those same 26 units on the site. This is that staff concern. I think they did a terrific job. I would argue with you that the alternative plan also meets the approval criteria. You could build the approval, the other plan that's kind of being mentioned, but these are the primary issues that you're hearing from staff. You're hearing about the proposed Village Center Recreation Facility. We are... We are in concept. We are in design on that. We are bringing that forward. We have an active application that is ready to be submitted. We are fully in context, and we'll talk about the lot sizes of Gregory Hill. Overall site design, we're going to go through that. The alley configuration, we also have proposed how to meet the elective points and believe we have a solution there as Jacob mentioned. I just want to focus a little bit now on a little bit more background of the context of this site. I want to talk about the transition of this site. Just a reminder that the only part of this neighborhood that is not built is now B2, right? B1 is under construction. So as you look at this image, to the north, mountain terrace is 18 dwelling units per acre. B1 is five dwelling units per acre. South of us, Gregory Hill allows 3.5 to 5, as does Observatory Heights, as does B2. Actually, built condition of Gregory Hill is actually 2.18. We are proposing 2.0. We are proposing a less dense neighborhood than Gregory Hill. Of course, the lot sizes are different. There is no question about that. That is the transition. So the transition of lot sizes and why we believe they're complementary in the context is create. If you look at the first image, you see the lot sizes of B1 transitioning to larger lots of B2 than to the larger lots of Gregory Hill, completely in context, understanding the lot size and the transition. The next image is the same image the city showed that showed those overall lots. We have not heard one comment from a planning commission or a city council to say, "We need larger lots and larger lawns and more..." Not a sustainable product in Westminster. That hasn't been the goal of Uplands. Thus, we are trying to transition on the edges away from that and find a more appropriate context. Lastly, it really shows a chart, a true comparison of what we're proposing against Gregory Hill. As you see there, we are proposing substantially more open space and a larger lot and actually less density than the current neighborhood was built out. This shows a little bit and maybe just kind of provides, Mayor, to your point earlier, what an alternative plan on this site would look like. And again, fully respect staff, have absolutely no angst, no animosity at all. But the other alternative here is to remove the alley. And this is what happens when you remove this alley. The unintended consequences here are you get less on-street parking because you lose the parking there. So you actually have less on-street parking. You get a much larger cul-de-sac so you can do fire apparatus turnaround. So you lose the entire structure there. You get significant increases in wall height. It now becomes a retaining wall all across the north side of this site. That is a very significant retaining wall at the base of the existing water towers, right? So we're changing the context. We estimate that you would have 40 feet of cut here. We would cut it at grade, 40 feet, and then the retaining wall. It completely segments it and separates it. It's not a good solution to have retaining walls to frame this, to somehow make it blend in more. Lastly, we think it just really buries the playground and the amenities. The trails, they're now below that retaining wall. That's the alternative. That's the only option here. As we said earlier, we've actually never spent more time on less lots in any project in our 25-year history, right? This is a very challenging site. We are talking about the most expensive semi-custom to custom homes on this site, probably starting at 1.5 to 1.8 million. The alternative, 3.4 to 3.8 million. It's the only way you can build a site. It is not a good alternative to lead to a larger lot, smaller unit count. Just want to show why we've done that. I'll get through this quickly. I just want to remind us from whence we've come. This is Bradburn and La Place. This is where we started this planning exercise, and now think about that dynamic street, the pedestrian connections, how we've solved La Place, the collective vision. Staff has been remarkable. Neighborhoods have been remarkable. We have planned this street together. I would argue what changes Gregory Hill is the existing city water tower. This is looking north. Now our northern edge is PLD, the city water tower, and the very corner of three wonderful homes on 82nd. The rest of our frontage is all on Bradburn. That's the context. To imagine we have to go over the water tower to redefine the context, it defies how you live at this street, how you interact really in the planning context. Also, just showing you completely outside-in, last site left, look at how this site has been whittled down. 30-foot of fall, 37-foot of fall across this site, the connection that's required over to Lowell, the utility connections off of B1, the roadway connections off of B1. This is what remains and solving the existing outfall structure for the water tanks. That is the only site. Clustered lots are simply the only way to move forward. Then you add in roadways. You understand why we have arrived at the site plan that we are showing. It is the only way to absorb the grade. It's the only way to do it without 40-foot, the retaining wall, that much cut coming out of the site. So again, you really see kind of the site layout, the site context, and the dynamics of the site. I'm now going to have Kaylee talk a little bit about the plan. We showed you how we got there. She'll walk through a little bit of the planning dynamics. Kaylee.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and City Council. Kaylee Gillespie with Norris Design. Thank you so much for your time this evening. And Marcus, thank you for painting the bigger overall picture as to the why and how we got to this point. I'm going to add a little bit more detail to the specifics of the B2 neighborhood, which completes the planned transition in housing types and densities between the existing homes in Gregory Hill and the proposed attached and detached homes within Uplands. Providing 26 custom or semi-custom front-loaded, single-family detached homes across 6.09 acres of buildable area. The design responds to the site's existing significant topography by limiting the amount of retaining walls and also integrating with the approved homes in the Uplands B1 neighborhood to the north and providing a transition of lot sizes and home types to the Gregory Hill neighborhood, all while creating a cohesive and engaging pedestrian experience. This neighborhood provides one primary access, which is consistent with the PDP and aligns with the Uplands B1 neighborhood to the north along Bradburn Drive. Osceola Way traverses east through the neighborhood, ending in a cul-de-sac at the eastern property line. A private drive, Newton Court, wraps back to the west, providing vehicular access to serve the southern block of homes. Fire access is provided along Osceola Way and Newton Court, which terminates into an emergency access-only gate, which is provided at the newly improved West 82nd Avenue cul-de-sac. And the blue star denotes where the garages will be located on the lots, showing how the homes are terraced across the existing topography with walkout conditions. The purple star represents our centrally-located, publicly-accessible private park adjacent to the View Corridor and the public land dedication. And just to the south is an eight-foot concrete regional trail connecting from Lowell Boulevard, providing rich connections to the greater trail network. This illustration highlights the right-of-way improvements along Bradburn Drive with the proposed conceptual architecture within the B2 neighborhood on the left and the approved B1 neighborhood on the right. While these homes front onto Osceola Way to the south, enhanced elevations face Bradburn and complement the homes within the B1 neighborhood, providing balconies and masonry in addition to a similar setback. Additionally, the visualization demonstrates how the homes will be situated in response to the existing topography, stepping down from the water tanks towards Bradburn Drive. Here you can see the View Corridor from Lowell Boulevard that was dedicated to the city to showcase and preserve the mountain views. On these next few slides, you will begin to see how our proposed site plan and homes accommodate the existing grade throughout this neighborhood. Homes shown in these sections are representative of form and massing and are not reflective of final architecture. For orientation, on the upper right-hand side of the screen is a key map showing the three cross-sections that have been cut. Section A cuts through 82nd Avenue, shown on the left-hand side of the section, down to the entrance of Osceola Way. Section B is cut from Bradburn on the left to the existing water tanks on the right. This section shows how the homes are terraced across the existing topography and how they sit below the existing water tanks. With roughly a 10% cross slope across the lot, utilizing the front-loaded homes with a walkout helps take up that 37-foot of grade change that exists from the water tanks to Bradburn. Section C cuts further east through the neighborhood where the grade becomes steeper. The dash line represents the existing grade. In this section, you can see how, in general, we're in alignment with the proposed and existing grades, minimizing the need for retaining walls. In addition to the public land dedication, the neighborhood features a publicly-accessible private park. The park is located adjacent to the distinctively-designed Newton Court, offering generous pedestrian connections to flow seamlessly from Bradburn to Osceola and into the public land dedication and the greater trail system. From the park, visitors can enjoy programmed activities or continue along the trail to take in the scenic views preserved in the View Corridor and the adjacent public land dedication open space. The park includes a whimsical playground, a large shade structure with ample seating, an open play lawn, and plentiful of shaded seating opportunities along the tree-lined edges. This illustration highlights the proposed neighborhood showcasing the strong connections from the approved B1 neighborhood to the north and the looped connections through the B2 neighborhood. Additional connections are provided from Gregory Hill neighborhood to the west and through the public land dedication to the east through an eight-foot regional trail, ultimately connecting the bike and pedestrian connections along Lowell up to the balance of Uplands. This neighborhood will feature unique custom or semi-custom homes. The ODP includes architectural standards that exceed the city's single-family detached design standards. Point requirements by an additional 300 points, ensuring aesthetically appealing homes and streetscape. Some of these standards include all homes are required to provide a two-foot offset on rear elevations as shown in the bottom image, providing an enhanced rear elevation along private streets. And the northern tier of homes that front on Osceola Way must also include at least two additional design features, such as a mass projection over the garage and a clearly-articulated entry element, which are shown in the upper images. Next, we'll wrap up the presentation by walking through a few exceptions. All exceptions are supported by the intent of the PUD Zone District. These exceptions collectively allow us to provide a density transition between the surrounding neighborhoods, a clustered housing layout that dedicates a large portion of the sites' public land dedication in View Corridor, and a plan that uses water thoughtfully and meets the overall intent of the approved PDP. In orange, we are requesting a smaller entry median. As a result of the discussion with fire, with the fire department regarding vehicle modeling, the median was revised to accommodate the vehicle overhang during turning maneuvers to ensure sufficient clearance for emergency access vehicles. In blue, we are requesting an attached sidewalk with the tree lawn being provided behind the walk. This request limits the amount of retaining walls that would be necessary and create a more natural pedestrian experience. Along Bradburn Boulevard, highlighted in pink, we are requesting a reduction in the perimeter setback. This adjustment will allow the homes to be positioned closer to the street, strengthening their connection to the public realm, and the reduced separation will minimize the need for retaining walls in the rear, fostering visual and social connections with the street. This design approach enhances natural surveillance and improves neighborhood walkability and supports a vibrant and lively streetscape character. Despite the reduction, each home still provides an ample 27-foot rear yard, ensuring privacy, function of outdoor living, and opportunities for landscaping. This design choice reflects the character of the B1 neighborhood just to the north, which utilizes a 44-foot setback while offering a complementary variation that enriches the overall neighborhood layout. We're also requesting a setback reduction for one lot backing to West 82nd Avenue. The reduced setback is mitigated by the topography of the site and the additional plantings along the street frontage. These reduced setbacks are thoughtful and careful to not impact the adjacent neighbors. Together, these setback modifications balance neighborhood character, livability, and streetscape vibrancy, strengthening the transition between the proposed homes and the surrounding context. And lastly, all homes include a reduction on minor roof pitches up to 5 and 12 and a 7% reduction of on-lot landscape. This landscape reduction is based on the maximum allowed building envelope. Actual percentages of landscape will likely be higher. Consistent with the previously-approved neighborhoods, we're requesting a reduced on-lot setback. These adjustments support the delivery of custom or semi-custom homes and maintain critical fire access through loop circulation and thoughtfully utilize water to help preserve adjacent open spaces. And the top left, highlighted in orange, are the typical proposed on-lot setbacks in Build 2 lines for the homes fronting Osceola Way. The upper story Build 2 exception is due to the fire department required setbacks for their ladders to reach the roof in case of an emergency. And the bottom right, highlighted in blue, are the proposed homes along Newton Court, illustrating the typical setbacks in Build 2 lines designed to meet essential fire access requirements. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Marcus.
I will finish up. Sorry for my very constrained voice tonight. This just shows our water plan. Consistent as well, we are proposing the same usage on B2 as was proposed in our original water budget. I would point out the intentional provisions there and approaches to Uplands outside of the home, typical 25% to 50% reduction of lot size. That has been the philosophy of Uplands and the consistency, and we continue to believe that is the right solution for this site as well. This is our PDP compliance to show that we are fully compliant. This is what is in the underlying PDP, maximum of 26 dwelling units, not 10, not 8, maximum of 26 dwelling units. We are fully compliant. We are actually providing more publicly-accessible private parks on this site than was planned and believe, again, that this is fully compliant with the underlying code. I would say here on the standards, the approval criteria, I would note most specifically here, Item 2, conformance with the approved PDP. The fact that we have gone through a comp plan change, a PDP, the B1 plan, and now the B2 plan, three consistent votes on this. Also, Item 5, that shows harmonious with existing public and private development. Again, the water towers, the PLD, that really defines the edge, and we believe we're a very important part of that transition. Lastly, I will close on this side. This shows the history of starting on this site in 2020. I want to remind everyone that the 2013 comp plan on this site had 66 units on this site. 66 units were on B2, not across B1, on B2. We reduced it voluntarily with a comp plan amendment to take it down to 3.5 to have the same dwelling units. So we created that transition, and then we reduced it more in our PDP. This is incredibly consistent with Gregory Hill. We actually are reintroducing that character, that lot size of Gregory Hill to really match that. So with all that, we respectfully request that you join Planning Commission, which voted four to one to support this application. Again, staff has been terrific. Their plan is also supportable. Unfortunately, it's just not buildable. We couldn't build that on the site, and that's why we decided to bring this forward today to have a conversation about how we move it forward. With all of that, thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to public testimony. Do we have people signed up? We do. The first speaker is Linda Grabiel. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor, Council. As a local citizen and representative of the community and its history, I want to express my desire that this magnificent view from the top of Lowell Boulevard, southeast of Bradburn Boulevard, be preserved for all and not just a few. The current plans show only the perspective to the northwest towards Longspreek. This is the viewing area there, the upper triangle. This limited view would restrict the majestic sunset views directly to the west that people currently come to see throughout the year. It would also restrict the uninterrupted panorama of the foothills and local Rockies during the day. during the day. Catching a glimpse of the Rockies while driving is wonderful, but being able to see the park and enjoy the changing vistas, sorry, being able to park and enjoy the vistas through various cloud patterns in the setting sun is something that cannot be duplicated. Having worked at the school directly east of this view for 20 years, I have marveled at the changing patterns from day to day. I am still members of Rice Pedal. When I personally go there to take pictures, it is so easy to get a full spread of nature. Once the property is developed, it cannot be easily undone. The land would be very difficult. I do not feel that it is the best interest of our citizens to take the view away. So the thing that concerns me most is that it's going to limit the view, and we don't want that. The people that come to our area know what a treasure we have. When I post pictures of the view on social media, I often get the most responses from those pictures. What a wonderful way to advertise our city. By the way, do you know what the name Westminster actually means? I'm going to tell you. West is, well, yeah, west of us is those mountains, and a minster is a church. A church is a place where people gather to view things from a spiritual perspective. When I look at our beautiful Rockies and the jagged foothills, I am drawn to appreciate the things money cannot buy but is readily available to us all. My soul is full of wonder for what I see, my heart is at peace, and the troubles of this world fade in the splendor of what lies before me. A familiar quote says, "If you have faith and do not doubt, you can say to this mountain, 'Be removed and be cast into the sea,' and it will be done." Until and if that ever happens, we must be stewards of this treasure we have been given. We are caretakers of this earth we get to reside on, and we can only appreciate it to the extent that we can see it. Another quote says, "I will lift my eyes up to the mountain. Where does my help come from?" No matter what your belief system is, no one can deny that this view is greater than you or I. I plead with you to help maintain it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Suzanne Wright.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor McNally and the City Council. My name is Suzanne Wright. I live at 8135 La Place Court. You have a packet in front of you. I respectfully request that City Council deny this upland consent plan tonight. The explanation starts on page one of the handout packet. Do you have it yet? Is my time going to be used up?
We have it.
Okay, can we start at three again?
Nope, keep going.
Keep going. Okay. On page one, it shows the 82nd Avenue cul-de-sac in green. That works. You approved it in September 2023, and we're very grateful for the, you know, the safety and quietness on our streets. Page one also shows the proposed gate in red and the Newton Court alley in yellow connecting to that cul-de-sac. The fatal flaw tonight in this plan is that access point. There's an alternative to that, which nobody's talked about, a 23rd site plan, if you will. The preliminary things to look at are on page two. If you turn to that, there's a circle, a black circle around the CBU mailbox system, and the red star shows the fire access that's denoted for this subdivision. There is an alternative plan. The CBU mail system moves to the east end of Osceola where they have their little turnaround cul-de-sac. That's the purple star that you would see on page three. This is on page three, I'm sorry. The Newton Court alley can intersect with Osceola Street at the orange star. This loop configuration meets the International Fire Code according to the fire marshal. Fire access moves from B2 moves to Osceola Street and Bradburn Drive at the red star. This is identical to fire access for B1, right across the street. The focus of tonight's hearing is on the developer's plan and their multimillion-dollar investment in this B2 parcel. There must be equal focus on the multimillion-dollar investment made by observatory property owners over decades. We are long-term residents who've made many sacrifices to create and maintain a beautiful neighborhood with unique homes. No one invested so much money, time, and energy to have our streets converted to an alley bearing the brunt of all B2 construction traffic for years, followed by a permanent B2 residential traffic using the shortcut. Every construction vehicle will have to go through that access point. It's a narrow alley. They're going to have to enter or exit, and we're going to have all that traffic on our streets. Again, I ask you to deny this request.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Wright. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate the fact that we can talk about our concerns. I would propose that the plan be rejected. And the main reason is that it would, the traffic pattern would dump all sorts of hazardous traffic on La Place Court. The council solved the problem, and so we've had two years of great peace and quiet and safety, and now the developer wants to negate all that. This so-called gate is not a gate. It can't be closed. The fire marshal has indicated it has to be locked to open. So the traffic will come, and the problem with La Place Court is that it has served as a shortcut, and it's also a hill. So there's good news and bad news. The good news is you can see Pike's Peak from La Place Court on a clear day. Also, John Nordstrom, he was probably the best hockey player that came through the youth Westminster program, used to use La Place Court to condition up and down, up and down. So that's the good news. The bad news is the perspective is terrible. Traffic coming up the hill has no idea about what's on the other side. And I'd like to briefly mention two things that happened to our family because of this. My daughter was returning back to the house and turned into, go into the garage, and a driver coming up the hill didn't see her and plowed into her car. The police officer mentioned that the driver said he was in a hurry, had to take a shortcut. That was his excuse. And then incident occurred with me where I was returning from the mailbox across the street and saw this car coming at me, and I felt like a goalie trying to block a shot. But fortunately, she turned at the last minute. Time's up.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and committee members. I want to completely support Resident Suzanne Wright's proposal of an alternate plan that would protect and benefit all involved residents and meet the requirements of emergency vehicles. I support any viable solution that would keep only one entrance and exit on our La Place Court street. On September 2023, the City Council put a cul-de-sac on our street because they recognized it was necessary for the safety of all vehicles due to the then very high volume of traffic misusing this street as a cutoff. This made it accident-prone and dangerous with the lack of sight being on both sides as it's a hill. To have the proposed permanently open gate required by the fire department as a vehicle opening even possible onto our street would highly increase its use. It would become a cutoff for countless daily numbers of construction trucks as well as the additional new residents, making it very hard to avoid hitting the other vehicle head-on or to even have room to miss them with many driving in the middle of the street. In fact, because Google Maps has not been updated to include the cul-de-sac from a one-way street with the north exit, there's still daily construction trucks and cars dangerously driving down the middle of the street, and I do find it especially dangerous to try and back out of my driveway. The proposed plan regarding the Newton Street into a fixed open gate would leave the ongoing potential of wrecks and possible loss of life. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chris Durham. Welcome.
Hello, thank you, and thank you for answering your call to serve. It's important. I am here to speak to you about La Place Court with the uplands. As has been mentioned, but I don't think has been illustrated, is that there is a hill on La Place, but it's a blind hill. When you come up one side, you have no way to see what's on the other, and same thing going the other way. And as Mr. Wright mentioned, he has had two experiences where property damage and potential loss of life with him almost getting hit. There's also animals that are, you know, going around. So it is a significant, I can't express it enough, having lived there for over 20 years and when it was open, a significant safety risk. You know, I don't know what it is with this particular hill that people like want to race up it. I don't know. It's like, you know, there's the mountain, I gotta go, you know? So please, we need to not have the connection. Mrs. Wright, she gave a plan on page three that has an alternative to what the gentlemen have presented. So please do not allow open access for La Place Court. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Greg Beacom. The next speaker is Ed Broswick. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name's Ed Broswick. I live at 3870 West 82nd Avenue. I'm going to ask you guys to reject this ODP the way it's drawn for two reasons. First reason, I don't want emergency access seven and a half feet from my driveway. And the second reason that no one in five years has ever talked about is the city has a 12-inch water main that passes directly underneath one, house number 26 on their proposal. It was put in in 2013, and I don't know why no one's ever mentioned it before, but it passes directly underneath the house that sits on the west side of Osceola Street. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Teri Hilgendorf.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I want to thank the mayor and city council and all the planning that's been, all the time that's been given for the planning and looking at all the details of this. I've really been impressed by what's happened here tonight. And I'm going to sound redundant, but on September 11, 2023, the City Council heard comments from these same residents of La Place Court, and we presented a petition asking the City Council to reinstate the La Place Court cul-de-sac that was part of the original uplands plan. The City Council agreed to our request. They put in the cul-de-sac, and safety issue has been abated, and as everyone said, the neighborhood is much quieter, and we all feel safer because of that. So it was a great surprise to hear that the Planning Commission approved an alternate proposal from uplands, which would, in effect, again, allow that cut through for people using La Place Court. We respectfully ask the City Council to keep in place the original plan of uplands and to give precedence to the needs of the people who currently live on La Place Court and not to unknown houses that may be built and to residents that are not yet in place, but to consider the needs of the residents who are there now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Charles Ragsdale.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor McNally and the rest of the City Council. If you approve this program, this ODP, within a few weeks, heavy equipment will be in there ripping the ground up all the hill and taking it out completely so that they can treat the soil. That's what they've done on all the rest of the project. That's what they'll do there. In 2007, we had a flood at my house. I live right next to the tanks, and I'm worried that their tearing up the other side of the hill is going to somehow destabilize those tanks that are up there, and we're going to get another flood. And I'd like to know who's going to be liable to pay for the damage if that flood occurs and if it takes our house or our landscape and our yard out again. The other thing is, we've heard all of these problems about elevation, and yet they're going to rip out all of the dirt that's over there, move it away, put it in a great big pile, put some different dirt in, or some of that dirt and some other dirt in with it, and they're going to recreate the hillside. If they really want to get rid of their elevation problems, they can just put it in flat, leave it flat, put up some retaining walls, and build track houses like they're trying to do everywhere else. Thank you. Please deny this.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ann Ragsdale.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor McNally, council, staff. I'm Ann Ragsdale, I live at 8120 Osceola Street, Westminster, Colorado. I hope that you have a wonderful feeling looking at the Planning Department's recommendations. They are your Planning Department personnel. They have studied this, and they are recommending a no vote from you tonight regarding this particular parcel. The proposed parcel is not a continuation of the neighborhood. The homes won't even look like any of the homes that are in the neighborhood, which are all individual as well. As far as water consumption is concerned, it is in the interest of the homeowner, not the developer, to conserve water. The planned walkway is adjacent to the water tank property and brings the possibility of unwanted attention to that facility. And at the Planning Department, at the Planning Commission hearing, it was said about the developer had to have this parcel be as presented in order to make money. Where does it say that a developer has to make money on his decisions? Thank you, and consider your Planning Department as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Don Volk. Welcome.
Mayor, city council. I have lived here 50-plus years in this city and seen some good and some bad things happen. This is a bad thing. The road that Uplands is going to build through the cul-de-sac has got to be a two-lane road. Knock the cul-de-sac down and get the people over the hill on La Place Court. That road is a dangerous hill, and it's a blind hill. And today I was driving down Lowell, and as you get almost to Lowell, to 80th, 80th Avenue, you go down a hill. On the top of the hill, it says Blind Hill, a sign. I think we need a couple of those on our street, and La Place Court says Blind Hill. Because once you go up that hill, you cannot see anybody coming over to hit you as you're continuing down the hill. At one time, we had a white line down the middle of the road, which kept people on left and right of the road. They took the line out. I asked the city person, my friend Bob, who works there, said, "Why did you take our line out?" He said, "You have a tree, a city street that does not need a line." Now, that's kind of a questionable answer, you know what I'm saying? But I think that by building this two-lane road through the cul-de-sac, it's going to constitute a multitude of cars using it. Our neighborhood cannot, cannot handle 50 or 60 extra cars a day going over our hill and then through the other neighborhood to get there. Now, to get to La Place Court, you have to go down, I think it's Mariposa, isn't it? Then make a left and go down 81st, make a right and go over the hill. That's a little bit cumbersome. If we were to take out that little stretch of about 200 feet or 300 feet one way, that would allow it to go over and not have a problem of not abiding by the law. So I think that we need to look at some other factors, and this is really a factor involving the safety of our citizens of the city of Westminster who live there, who want to live there and have lived there for 50 years. Why must be we directed by a large customer to change our streets and put in a beautiful cul-de-sac and then knock it out and put a two-lane road through it? I don't know how many cul-de-sacs in the city of Westminster have a two-lane road going through it. I think we need to turn around and say, "Look, wait, we need to get a backbone here. We need to tell Upland, listen, there's got to be a better way to answer this problem, and we have proposed it by alternating the road out of the alley." Alleyways are, by the code, are not supposed to be built in the city of Westminster. That's the code. Private drives and alleys are now in the city. Ask the gentleman who was telling us all about the problems of, what the real problems are with our friends here. Thank you. Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I rest my case.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christina Mattson.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, madams and sirs, council and mayor. My name is Christina Mattson. These are my daughters, Esther and Eva, my husband, and I am addressing this Uplands parcel. I want to believe that the purpose of holding these meetings for the development of all these beautiful land parcels is so that our local government, you guys, can listen to the people's voice, and that is such a valuable opportunity. We really are grateful for that, so thankful. My family moved here to Denver seven years ago from Virginia, modern Oregon-day Oregon trailers. We came out west chasing the mountains and the freedom and strength that they represent. We were lucky enough to buy a house right off of Lowell by the Westminster Castle, the historic O'Gorman House, super beautiful. This little rural suburb felt like we should be miles out of town in open range because of how surrounded we were by gorgeous blowing grass fields and the quiet that it brought. Unfortunately, we are quickly being taken over by new developments, and this land is becoming very processed. We know that this parcel of land is already bought and sold and being planned for. However, we were promised that our mountain view would be preserved. This view helps keep us connected to our land, ourselves, and our community. When I drive by some of the views that we have, I think to myself, "Oh, my gosh, I am so lucky to live here." By removing this sunset view, it starts the spiral of disconnection and discontent in ourselves, and we won't even realize the slow fade until we're completely separate from the land, and it's too late. Once a view is gone, it's gone, and it can't be gotten back. This is very important to the people, and we hope that you can honor that by keeping the houses low enough, or not at all, skip it altogether, so that we can maintain a full view of the mountains from a designated viewing spot. A viewing spot without an actual view isn't a view. This would be a gift to the community, our future generations, my daughters and their daughters, and we would be honored to have this sunset tailgate spot maintained in its full magnitude. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Esther Mattson. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello and good evening, mayor, council. My name is Esther Mattson. I'm 12 years old, and I live with my family on 82nd, right next to the Westminster Castle. When we first moved to Westminster, something that stood out to us was all the rolling fields. They made it feel so rural when we were really 15 minutes outside of Denver. They made our neighborhood unique, a countryside in the city. Uplands Parcel B2 specifically is unique because to the west is the mountains and to the south is Denver. It gives us a glimpse of both worlds, the generations before us and the generations to come. If you asked a true Coloradan what to visit in town, they'd say, "The mountains, of course." You hike them, walk them, take photos of them, stare at them, and generally, they are just part of your life. They are your backyard. The views are amazing. What is to the west of Westminster? The mountains. If you looked out of a plane over our city, you'd see those golden fields that normally belong to the country. You'd see the striking peaks. A few years later, if you were on the ground, you'd see modern mansion homes, no mountains, because those three-story housing developments would block them out. These mountain views, the ones that belong normally on Instagram or Photoshop, they are important to the community. They will be important to the generations to come as well and should be preserved. This is why I am proposing a public viewing space, giving the same unobscured panoramic view as before, the same view that our ancestors enjoyed decades ago. This is what I am asking for our past, our present, and our future, our children's children, our grandparents, and ourselves. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Eva Mattson. Welcome, and to your dad.
I'll speak a little on her behalf since I got here late, but I just had a question, maybe, is that allowed to? Does the, do the two different plans affect the height of the top of the houses so that that affects the view corridor?
And they won't answer it now, they will answer after the hearing of public hearing.
Okay, cool. Well, we just, I think my daughter spoke quite elegantly, but we would love to be able to, we were promised along the way that there would be at least maybe some kind of view corridor preserved at the top of the mountains, or the top of the hill there, as you all know, it's a really beautiful thing, and we'd love to just see if there was any way to keep the houses low enough so that could be preserved for the public rather than just to the benefit of a couple people. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dominic Cotenzio. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name is Dominic Cotenzio. My family and I are six-year residents of Westminster in Observatory Heights. We have low seniority, even if only by a year from, from the last family. We live on Osceola and 81st Place. In addition to my neighbors and my community, my family and I have concerns about the Uplands development, specifically the construction of the proposed fire access for the community being developed along the south side of Bradburn, known as B2. As proposed, the fire access gate will have dangerous and detrimental effects on the existing community. An open gate is too inviting for B2 to create, recreate the issues of La Place Court that have already been solved. My concerns can be summed up in two points. It creates a danger issue, one, opening, again, opening the proposed fire access route would unintentionally turn La Place into a thorough way, leading to a noticeable increase in vehicle traffic. Currently, La Place Court is closed off, ensuring that cars only enter when absolutely necessary. This limited access not only preserves the quiet character of the neighborhood, but also protects the residents' peace of mind. Increased traffic would bring greater safety risks for children, pedestrians, more noise, and potential wear on the road, all of which erode the calm and security of the community that the community currently enjoys. Secondly, it creates a real estate issue. I'm a licensed real estate broker, licensed since 2003. I know you guys are all wondering how I got licensed at three years old because I look so young, but I assure you this is true. But as a licensed and experienced broker, it's in my professional and qualified opinion that the proposed fire access will negatively impact the value and the desirability of the current Observatory Heights neighborhood. Over time, the loss of this exclusivity and tranquility due to the proposed access will negatively affect properties, as buyers often pay a premium for homes in low-traffic private neighborhoods. As the Uplands developer, development presenter mentioned, this is the most unique parcel of land in the development. The council should take into account the uniqueness and deny the current plan. You have voted yes on multiple plans, but the continuity of this development should not outweigh the effects of this plan. There are, there are alternatives proposed that do not create a new burden on this settled issue. It is our hope that the council will take, the council will take this into account and take into account the best interests of all of Westminster's residents, not only its newest ones. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Jim Fenimore. Welcome.
Good evening again. Just want to take into a summary here from listening to what's been spoke about this evening, and use some common sense here. Marcus, Chad, welcome, guys, staff, and the attorneys, everybody else. As you can look around here, most of these people have, are seniors, been here for a long time, they got big investments there. That prop, that development's been up there for around, probably the first houses have been around 60 years up there. What we're talking about proposing here is putting a lot of traffic on La Place Court. It's already, that's probably one of the steepest roads in the city. Paul can probably answer that one. And it's very dangerous, very dangerous for that hill, especially if you've got some ice and snow on it. It's not good for the community to put all this extra traffic onto it. I've seen where if you take and go down that Osceola Way, you could take and run that back out to the north and take most of that traffic to where you're looping it out that direction. You're not running all those vehicles back down through the alleyway into the roundabout onto La Place Court, back through these people's neighborhood. That would extremely put a lot of danger there for the neighborhood, and for the fire department to say no on something, that says a lot. It takes a lot for the fire department to say, "No, we do not like that. It's a safety problem." Are we going to have problems? We're going to hurt somebody? We're going to kill somebody? And with burning them up? Who knows? But that hill is very dangerous, and I don't know if you guys have ever been on it, but if you haven't, you need to go down there and drive down it because it is steep. I've walked up and down it, I've driven up and down it. And then something that I believe that, you know, it's, it's, it needs to be, you know, it's going to be developed one way or another, I think we can do a common sense on it and run that road to where it's coming, where the, one entry on the far west end and one entry on the far east. We've got all of that view corridor on that far east side, so that would allow enough land to take and put that exit going out on, through that roundy round, back out onto the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And before we continue with anything, I've been asked to take a quick break. And before we continue with anything, I've been asked to take a quick break.
...
Tremendous for emergency response times for their homes. If there is an incident on those lower homes, it's much more likely that you would access through our site, use that gate, open it, and provide that service there. So I just want to be sure that we're talking best.
And where's, I don't know for sure in reading everything yesterday and today, where is that gate?
You bet. So if Kaylee, I don't know if we can annotate, but Kaylee, if you could maybe show on that site plan or maybe put one up that shows it better. Also, Mayor, if I may, just on this point, I just to make it, we also have a turnaround on the top of this on Newton Court. I want to be really clear about that. So all the questions about delivery vehicles, Amazon, first of all, most will be designated and turn around in our cul-de-sac on Osceola. If not, there is signage there, we will have a turnaround at the top of that alley. You can see it almost drawn in there where you back in and turn around. That is standard in all communities. We went through the code, that meets code, to have that. So again, we don't want construction, we don't want delivery vehicles, nothing to go through the neighborhood. We also would fully agree during construction, put a barricade. There's no connection to 82nd at all. So three quarters of the comments you heard were on that. Where that gate, Kaylee, can you maybe just describe, maybe even on from the notes of the lots there, where that gate is at?
So on this plan here on West 82nd Avenue, where it terminates in a cul-de-sac, just off of the cul-de-sac, at the beginning of Newton Court, as you go east, there'll be a gate right there.
Tim.
It also requires signage in the PDP or this ODP with notes that emergency access only and pedestrian access only. And again, the fire department, I'm not picking a bone with them at all, has said, we want it open now. If your condition is to have it closed, we have no problem. We don't want to have a roadway connection. We completely concur with the neighbors. Maybe the other thing, Mayor, that I just want to be sure and clarify, Mayor and Council, the comments about view corridor. As you all know, the view corridor has already been designated. The city owns that view corridor, as does the PLD land. The height of the homes doesn't change to the wonderful family that spoke. So in either like an eight to 10 unit plan or a 26 unit plan, the height of those homes would basically be the same. The height that's allowed in this own district is 40 feet. I don't know that we haven't designed these homes at all, but that wouldn't change that or impact that view corridor. I will say, this is a study that shows from that view corridor, you check, you catch that first house kind of there, those first two homes, but the neighbors, the city, everyone supported that view corridor, we do as well, and that's already been dedicated and forever protected. Kaylee, any thoughts? Happy to go through other questions as they come up. We just wanted to be sure, we're actually in full agreement with the neighborhood. So if there's a condition on that gate, we'd love to close that gate today. Thank you.
Staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick, to address some of the applicant's presentation, so the applicant cited that they did 22 different site plans for this development. Staff has only ever seen two site plans, so we would welcome the opportunity to look at some of these other alternative site designs. We saw an alternative from an audience member, from one of the residents, which seemed to offer some merit. I know it has some challenges with grade, but there are alternatives that we just have not had a chance to evaluate. And then the 2013 comprehensive plan did not call for 66 units. It allows a maximum density of 66 units, and that maximum does not reflect what can be built once you apply standards and what the standards might require. And finally, since there's a lot of discussion around the gate and the HOA gate, so the notes in the ODP would allow the new HOA full access to the gate, so they'd be able to access it at any time, and it wouldn't be restricted to just the fire department.
I promise not to do back and forth in any way. I will say unequivocally, on behalf of the developer and the HOA, put any condition on it, if the gate needs to be closed, we'd love to have it closed. We're not taking control of that. We're saying that right here, I want to be very straightforward about that. Comp plan guidance, it's 66 units. I want to be sure that's true. So just on that again, I think we're there. By the way, the site plan 23 that was suggested by a neighbor, it's a wonderful plan. We actually looked at it. It exceeds the grade. You cannot build it, that exceeds the grade. She drew it very, very well, you all saw it in your packet. We looked at that site plan. So Jacob is absolutely correct, we did not turn in 22 site plans. We have studied every possible parameter on this site, and it really leads to A or B. An eight to 10 unit home development here that it's single loaded, a large lot size development, or something like this, lose a lot or two, doesn't change the layout at all. It is cut it in half or proceed at this type of density.
Staff, have anything else? Questions from Council at this time? Councilor Demott?
I see the fire chief back there, since he's been talked about so much, or his department. Curious at his input on that gate.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Fire Chief.
So I'm just curious, is the, as far as the gate, is that something that the fire department would allow to be locked down? And if you have access, because that's what we're hearing, so I'm just curious what the fire department's position is.
Councilor Demott, thank you for the question. I'm happy to provide some clarification regarding the gate and its access. This development itself exceeds 150 feet in length, so two exits are required from that neighborhood. The current layout does not allow the fire department to have a turnaround aspect, and that is where the second exit and the gate was proposed. From a fire department perspective, we are generally not in favor of gates due to the impact on response times, and if there is a gate, our preference to have, is to have that open, so we have emergent response access into a location, or in this case, exiting, so for transporting to a hospital. However, in recognizing the impact on surrounding community, the fire department is open to closing the gate, as long as the fire department has electronic access to the gate with our emergency lighting system. So the gate can be closed, we pull up to the gate, our emergency lights activate it and open it for our purposes only, the fire department is open to that.
Great, thank you. Is that something that the developer or applicant would pay for?
Absolutely. It's actually in the notes that it has to be built that way, so unequivocally, we would build it and support that and pay for that. Yes.
Thank you.
Can I just ask the chief to go along with your question?
Sure.
Because we have the partnerships, it's any fire engine that would come in, it would be recognized?
Yes, there's different systems. The question being that since we work closely with other fire departments, would those fire departments have access to the gate? We'd have to explore that system. There's Opticom that activate the emergency signals. Most of the gates do operate on the Opticom system. So that would be a component that we would want to incorporate into the gate to ensure access from all of our partners.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. I just had a couple other quick questions. I just have a note here, and so this is a side note, but I'm going to say it anyway because I don't want to forget about the signs on the blind hill that they were talking about. I think that makes sense, so maybe that's something we could look into on the side. But two other things that I was curious to ask about. One, a gentleman, I don't remember his name, brought up that there's a water main that goes under one of those parcels. Is that something that can be addressed? That seems to me like you wouldn't want to build over the top of that.
Eric's going to answer that question. I'm just trying to see if there's a site plan that shows it, it's over the kind of unique shaped lot there is where that's at.
Yeah, and with that, we've worked with the city staff quite exclusively on this issue, and what we've, we've been trying to find an access for them to be able to get from the cul-de-sac down to Bradburn, as they typically want an access above the fire lane. So we've worked with them, and that is actually why, one of the reasons why we have our redesigned route of our water line. So it's going to be demolished and rerouted, so there's not going to be a water line underneath that route, and now it provides an access to the water line for maintenance in perpetuity.
Okay, great, thank you. And the last thing I just want to kind of understand, and I mean, Mr. Ragsdale brought up about the moving of the dirt, and I think it's a good question. I know that my understanding is we do that, so basements here in Colorado don't end up messed up after building, but maybe you could talk a little bit more about that process and what that looks like, because I feel like no matter what you build there, you're going to have to do removal and reentry of dirt.
Yeah, absolutely. Eric will go through that in detail. Just to frame it again, the question was about the grading, and Mr. Ragsdale mentioned the subex where we take out the dirt, treat it, actually what is required, but once you do your soil analysis, I'll draw the point here. Our site plan, the way we're grading it right now, versus an alternative site plan where you lower the entire site, under that alternative site plan, we would dig approximately 25 feet lower than we would on this site plan. So we're exasperating the retaining walls, increasing those, increasing the separation. We actually caused, we believe, some challenges on the structure and stability of that in that zone as well, and we'd actually dig deeper with an alternative plan. So this does allow us to basically rebuild that hill and stagger. Eric can talk about the differences, but yes, the alternative plan is much more subex and much more excavation than we're proposing.
And just to speak to subex, or also known as overexcavation, it's a geotechnical issue in our region that we have clays in bulk, and what it's doing is it's breaking up the clays, separating it, mixing it, and mixing it with good soils and moisture treating it, putting it back in for the foundations of the homes, and then building it back up. And typically, in, I'd say 99% of the cases, it's an overex to at least 10 feet below the, any foundation of the house, so the basement foundation, or if it's crawl spaces below that. So in this case, with the basement, it's still going to be another 10 feet below the basement, and that's typically done across the whole state.
Great, thank you. I do actually have one last question for the applicant. So in terms of view corridor, I thought there were some good points brought up in terms of what it looked like on the diagrams. I saw that there was a clear view to part of the mountains, but it looks like one of the homes on the upper part of the hill would block a good portion of what is, you know, a pretty good view.
Yeah, I think, so Councilor Demott, we're just showing this view here, and again, on conceptual architecture, right? Those aren't designed homes, but I think we just wanted to be sure and show it. You can see on that right hand, lower right hand, it shows kind of that corridor of views there, right, and what we were trying to protect. And the city, as you know, that was an incredibly exhaustive process to protect that view corridor. And then, as you know, to the west of that and south of our development there is PLD. In a lot of ways, that plays into it as well, right? Seven plus acres along Lowell there is all PLD and/or view corridor. So sir, I'm not at all arguing that you can see those homes do get in that if you look more towards the true west, right, instead of that. I think, I guess, our point is that under a 12, 10 lot development or a 26 lot, I think you're still touching that space. They have the same heights requirements there, no matter what. So I'm not saying that's okay, I'm saying that's what we put in the PDP and the view corridor we protected was more on that true kind of north looking view there across the site.
Do you have any options to get the west side, since, I mean, it's, you know, it's two of the houses, but have you guys thought through some of what that might look like?
Yeah, it's, honestly, we thought it was great, the family made it, Chad will answer it. We, as you said, these houses aren't designed, and are there some ways on those to have a lower footprint, a lower height, if you will, right, on that? That might be something that we could look at at that west side, but I'll have Chad address it.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council Chad Ellington with the Uplands team. Yeah, the perspective that you see on the screen there is one point in the view corridor, so we have to, we could pick 70 different variations of that, and are you looking further west, are you looking further north? This view corridor was really selected with the staff way back when we did the PDP, and it was that view that we were protecting, and then we widened it so that we had west and north and northwest. So that is the perspective you're seeing here. We put the houses in there, picking this point C that's on there, the white circle with the arrows, as the one perspective that we're analyzing. If you walk a little further north, you're going to lose some grade, you're going to go down the hill, but you're going to be able to see over those lower houses. So it's, we didn't analyze every single perspective. I think if it helps, we could offer to lower, to just build a, restrict that one lot on the corner that you're seeing in this perspective to a ranch. If that helps, I think also it's just that if you walked a little further north, or if you stood a little higher, or depending on how the architecture is, I think you're going to see houses down there, but you're still going to be able to see the mountains.
That makes sense. I mean, I don't have any further question, but I would just say that, that one is, if you chop that down, be more consistent with the conversation we've been having for the last six years, I think, so.
Yeah, and it's a good transition from that home to the next home.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Mayor Protem.
Councilor Demott, you had a lot of the same questions I had, kind of exploring that view, even though I, you know, I fully recognize that that is something that was established with the PDP, but if that is possible to reduce the scale of that one home on the corner, that'd be great. My question is maybe for staff, because it's, it's on the, the street layout and the access point onto 82nd Avenue. In a lot of the criteria, it stated that the connection is either harmful to surrounding development, or it's not adequate to accommodate the needs of the development. That's like in criteria 13 and 14, I think it's also mentioned, and six and seven, a lot of the criteria. So given that the, one of the things that we hear from the fire department is that it could potentially be locked, be gated off and not used, does that change your findings in some of the criteria that are leaning on it being impactful to 82nd Avenue? That's one aspect of my question. The second one is, I do note that in the explanations of criteria 13 and 14, the concern is more about the larger trucks needing to actually, or not being able to turn around on the cul-de-sac that would be Osceola Street. So like if there are moving trucks or anything larger than 30 foot box truck, is it going to need to use that other, you know, the gated exit onto 82nd Avenue?
Counselor, sorry, Mayor Protem Normella, as the ODP is currently drafted with the language in there, it wouldn't really change our view. This ODP is drafted, gives the HOA full access to open it at any time. That's been our consistent concern, is that trucks larger than 30 feet do not have an ability to turn around, and just with the grade on that hill slope there, taking a delivery in the back of those homes seems challenging, depending on what you're getting delivered. I can imagine with a lot of these homes, they'll need to have retaining walls put in place afterwards, so they'll have to get all of that material delivered as well. So they'd either be placing it onto the public street below them, or trying to navigate the street and then go out with place court. So it doesn't really change our analysis on that perspective as it's currently drafted. I don't know that changing the language, though, necessarily will alleviate concerns as, what if the gate breaks? What if the gate is manipulated to be opened on purpose? So just the connection alone is concerning to us. When Dave Downing retired last year, and one of his largest, or this year, and one of his largest proud achievements was he finally solved the Le Place Court issue after his entire tenure here at the city. So it's something we keep in mind a lot.
Yeah, normally, I'm not a fan of like closing off street access, but this, I remember, was pretty impactful because of the hill, so. I guess for the developer, you mentioned the 22 different site plans. We're only looking at the one, I'm imagining others that I would love to see tested out, but we don't see what those are looking like and how they could work. I'm curious to know if there's, and maybe this is for staff too, I mean, can there be two access points onto Bradburn? I mean, I'm not, I'm not overly opposed to, you know, the scale of the lots and the number of units and kind of trying to, in general, accommodate this orientation of development, but I'm just curious to better understand, like, what are the other options? And is there anything that we're just not allowing to happen through for staff that could potentially work?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Normella. So we have looked at and analyzed the idea of having a second access point onto Bradburn. It could work. I think a lot of it comes down to cutting the slope, to do a lot of cut regardless of kind of how you attack the site. Even in this site plan, they're doing a little bit of a cut to make the road work. That was one of the main challenges we face here, is there's a maximum percentage you can have on roads and also the alleys, and so that's really dictating a lot of the site plan. We have pitched kind of alternative ideas for homes that would, that would front onto Osceola and not onto, and eliminate the alley entirely and keep the exact same unit count. It would just be a very non-traditional style of house where you'd have a garage on the first floor, and all of your living would be up above it. So there's alternatives out there. Again, we, as city staff, we don't actually site plan these things, we don't go into CAD and draw this up, so it's kind of, we're relying on the applicant to address our comments. Thank you.
Okay, because as I recall, I mean, there are some unique designs over on the other, I forget which, is it D, the block?
D1.
D1, where you're dealing with similar grade issues. The connections project just around the corner from us has these kinds of grade issues. I'm just trying to understand from the developer, just what has or hasn't been tested for access points.
Mayor Protem, we could probably describe a lot of those. I think generally, this view I wanted to show, because this shows the east side of our site, and Mr. Jim asked about a connection point just from our cul-de-sac down to Bradburn there. As Jacob said, that exceeds the maximum allowable slope, right? So that's the problem with all of that, unless, as was said, you really cut this whole site across it. The challenge about having just a larger cul-de-sac and not having the alley at all is, it all becomes driveway access, and you lose all ability to park. And also to have a fire truck to be able to turn around there, you can't have vehicles there. So it's incredibly challenging. You do lose lots, and then you drop the site, and you fully disconnect now the trails and the amenity from the trail connection over to Lowell. We're literally lowering the site and making that connection very challenged. So that's what we tried to balance, was really it came down to two general site plans. No alley, only with a large cul-de-sac turnaround in the middle, or this access point where only emergency vehicle access. So I can have others describe more, but that's the challenge of this west side, excuse me, east side of our site, is it exceeds the grade, and we can't get another connection there.
Okay. Just see if I had any other questions. Just for staff, there was a question, or there, it was, it wasn't one of the criteria, but it was one of the strategies, strategic plan principles for housing diversity. What is, there was a concern that this project wouldn't meet the housing diversity goals that the city has, and I'm just curious if that's how that plays into this whole project. Because I think the concern was that it only has, or I can't remember if it's in a criteria, and now there's a lot of criteria, so you can maybe identify which criteria, if I'm mixing those up, but there was a concern that it didn't have housing diversity on the site, really small site, so.
Mayor Protem, so as part of our drafting of our agenda memos, we usually tie our agenda memos back to your strategic plan. Doing a denial, it's pretty awkward to do that. So we did pick some criteria, or some strategy, or some plan goals that you have, and so this one, this is an entirely single-family detached development in a neighborhood of entirely single-family detached. The Uplands is bringing the first attached product nearby, and then there's some multifamily directly to the north there. So that's just really what we're stating, is this is not increasing the housing diversity in the city by this product, this B2 application alone.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm good.
Counselor Azadi.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to fellow councilors who have asked some pretty good questions. The gate issue, what Chief Burke had said, it sounded like if we had a closed gate with electronic access, that's okay with fire, correct? And that's okay with a developer? My question there is, if we had that closed gate, which doesn't allow the public access, does that alleviate the community's concerns? Because I do remember this Le Place Court cul-de-sacs issue that we had a few years ago, and how this was very important, and we fixed that. Wouldn't having the closed, would having the closed gate continue the safety that we've seen with the?
Counselor Azadi, do you mind if I?
Yes.
Because I had the same question, and so my question is that, I mean, that's kind of an interesting thing, and I'm not sure that how we approach that procedurally for this kind of development, because we've heard from the public, we've got some answers. So is there a method of tabling the issue to go back to the community? Do you have to fail it? Because that, it was one of the big concerns we heard is view corridor and that access point, so I'm just curious what method we have to get feedback.
Thanks for the question, Counselor. Dave Frankel, City Attorney. So the council rules under 7.21 for public hearing procedures on land use matters, provide that counsel may approve, approve with conditions, deny, remand to planning commission, continue to a date and time certain or other. So I think fair to say counsel has some options, and if continuing this item is counsel's wish, and you can instruct as to what you expect to happen between the continuance and when it returns, you could certainly vote to do that. If you had a specific goal in mind, you could remand it to the planning commission and to address a specific goal, and if that meant changing a portion of the design, that could be an instruction that counsel provides to the applicant.
And I think that's important, because it links to my second question, which is related to the planning commission. So I've heard some conflicting feedback here, right? Some folks said that planning commission rejected it, but I think they approved it for one, and staff is rejecting it. So can I get some clarity on, and this is rare, right, to see a misalignment between staff and planning commission? So I'm curious, can someone please explain what the planning commission saw positive about this that staff did not see? Where was the disconnect?
Counselor, I think the planning, so the one nay, no vote was citing that the conditions for exceptions were not met, and the other four yes votes, they thought that the applicant had a creative solution for a challenging site. I don't believe, there was less turnout, public turnout at that hearing, so there was less conversation about the access gate and fire access.
Did you have a comment, Marcus?
Completely fair comment. I think Jacob was absolutely correct, that was fair. I think they said, the vote in support said we had met our burden, but there was less testimony about that particular issue. I think maybe we missed something in the presentation, honestly, tonight, Councilman, about upfront about that we don't want to have that connection, right? So I'll just offer, and I won't even look at my clients to get their look back, but if there is something like that in a, if it's the will of this council and mayor for a limited continuation period for us to have that discussion, I will also tell you that we completely believe that there could be a package drop-off area. You do that a lot now in custom communities, right, at the mailbox kiosks? That's in the first thing. There's better signage that we think we have in notes, but we could share that with the community about what those signs would say. When it transitions to Newton Court on that view, there ought to be very clear signage at the end of the cul-de-sac that that's an alley only, right? That'll be the first signs, right? We think there's some ways to really strengthen that commitment to the community, but if that's, I'm not saying you offer that, I'm just saying, if there's some things that we could get some feedback from the community, we are happy to do it, because we are not trying to say, leave that gate open.
Yeah, so my personal opinion would be that you would meet with the community again with this concept of a closed gate with electronic access, and see if they have any more feedback to give you on that, because that might satisfy the requirements for what, from the safety standpoint, and come back to us, but I'm not sure what my colleagues think. standpoint, and come back to us, but I'm not sure what my colleagues think.
Counselor Ha.
Yes, I do have a question for staff. So residents tonight brought an alternative plan, and the developer had said that they didn't think that that was possible because of exceeding the grade. And you talked about ways that you cut streets. So do you agree with the developer that this alternative that was brought forward by our residents, do you agree that that's not possible? Or do you think it is possible?
City Engineer John Burke is here as well, so he can speak to it as well. But it's not possible as currently designed, but he'll explain it for you.
Councilman Mayor Protem, good to see you all this evening. Actually, wonderful suggestion. I appreciate that quite a bit, and thank you for kind of giving me a copy of that here this evening. So the short answer is the way it's drawn is a 25% slope from that elevation down that lower street. That doesn't mean that if there was a reconsideration, that couldn't be further looked at to then deepen those slopes, but then it kind of trickles down through those retaining walls and everything else that the applicant talked about. So as drawn, no, but very thoughtful and creative. Appreciate it.
Okay. Well, I guess I will just say, I do agree with going back to the community as far as the gate. That seems to be the biggest issue, and I can't comfortably vote for something that the community has been very clear about. Also, I don't like the idea of potentially, this was a fix for another issue, and I don't like the idea of potentially taking that away. So if the community is okay with a locked gate, I'm okay with that, but we haven't had a chance to hear from the community. And if there's any way that we could reroute that so that gate is not an issue at all, that would be my preference. But also, I guess another question I have, and I'm not sure if this would be for staff or if this would be for the developer, but why is it that the HOA of the new development would have say over a gate that was put there for a different neighborhood that's already there?
Thank you very much for the question. The last question that you asked about why would the HOA, that would traditionally be included in the notes in the ODP for moving trucks for maintenance and control and construction of those facilities. So that responsibility is on us to build, construct, and maintain those. So we put that in. So the HOA would have that because that's the ongoing entity, right? Uplands sells to the developer, the developer's going to build those, and that HOA would have it. So that's why it was, it was definitely about if there were other larger moving vehicles, but I think we've figured out with that turnaround how we can restrict that, Counselor, so that's not an impact. So we agree, and I've said it, and Jacob is being very fair, it does say that in the ODP today. We're happy to go through that and amend that language as appropriate.
I would like that language amended, because I don't think that, because my fear is I don't want a HOA that does not exist today to overturn challenges that we've already mitigated for another neighborhood. And so I would not want them to be able to make changes to that. So that's, yeah, I would not be comfortable with that. So, yeah, so I think we need to go back to the community and see how the community feels.
Counselor Ireland.
I agree with Counselor Ha. I live in a neighborhood that has a gate to a trail system, and it causes all kinds of conflicts with neighbors in the neighborhood, outside the neighborhood. So an HOA is what controls our gate, and we have a code to it. But we've had troubles getting the gate installed in the first place, and then who controls the gate? Who gets to use the gate? It causes wars in neighborhoods, and that's not what we want for neighborhoods. We want people to enjoy their neighbors and not have a reason to fight with the neighbors outside the gate and inside the gate. So this gate, to me, is a big issue. Also, the alley is a big issue. Trucks can't get inside and out. I've never thought this alley was a good idea from the first place. It's an HOA nightmare, too, because who's going to pave the alley when it's worn out? HOAs are burdened with so many things anymore, with water, with trails, with prairie dogs, name it. We just keep putting it on HOAs. And it's got to stop. I'm for no HOAs, frankly. That's when neighbors got along, when we didn't have HOAs. So the gate problem to me, I'm just not going to approve this the way it is. I don't like how close the houses are together. I don't like how high they are. They should have been ranch-style houses. So they went with the rest of the neighborhood. They should have had bigger yards. None of it's to code. Do we not follow code anymore? Why do we have a master plan? We do not follow it in this city anymore. And that is why I'm here, because I'm tired of it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to make a different motion, but I'll let you finish up.
Go ahead.
Do you need to close that first, or no?
Oh, we have no more questions. I will, it is 10:01, and I will close the public hearing.
I'm going to make a motion, and then I'll save my comments after if it goes or not. But I would like to make a motion that this gets remanded back to the planning commission.
Sure, second. Oh, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I was going to make the same motion. So I second that. I have different potentially comments of why.
Comments, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think opposed to denying this and starting it back to square one, because, and I think it is a challenging site initially when we voted on rezoning or re, yeah, rezoning this particular parcel. I voted no on rezoning this parcel. And my, one of my particular concerns was the consistency with the neighborhood that we've heard a lot from tonight. I think there are some components of this that make a step towards that consistency, I think, but I am concerned about the, the two things I'm most concerned about is the access and making sure that that is codified as far as whose responsibility and that the fire department's comfortable. But more importantly, giving an opportunity for the public to say, yeah, that makes a difference to us, and we're not going to be able to hear that in our process tonight. So that seems like a good way to approach that and have it go back through that step of the process. Additionally, what I would like to see before it comes back to us is that particular lot where I do think you're going to be blocking the view if you don't put something in to let us know that you're not, you know, that you're going to do your best at those top-level houses to protect that view corridor. So that is, you know, where I'm at right now in terms of why I want it to go back to that process, because I really want to be able to hear from the public if those things make a difference.
Mayor Protem.
So the reason why I would want to see it go back to planning commission is to evaluate the access point. And like Counselor Ireland, I'm not a fan of, you know, these alleys that, you know, for small, for small projects like that. So I do worry about the, you know, the viability of the maintenance over time. At the same time, I'm also worried about the viability of just the Osceola Street serving the needs of the community as drawn without knowing whether or not, you know, there's going to be concerns about moving trucks and other types of vehicles that are going to be asking for access through the gate. So I think those two things are a concern for me. I think that's related, one, to Criteria 7, where it has no, the plan has no significant adverse impacts on future land uses and future development of the immediate area. I think the, that in combination with Criteria 6, where we're just concerned about what is that access and impact to the surrounding Gregory Hill residents. Yeah, and for me, I'd be happy if we just had a couple of access points on Bradburn Drive, and maybe, you know, we'd have to better understand what the retaining wall situation is, but, and if that impacts the trail connection, maybe the trail connection gets rerouted. But I'd prefer to have a development that works better for the people who are going to move there and also for the people who already live there, and if there's a way to evaluate different options to get there, that's what I'd like to see.
Counselor Ha.
Yes. So I'm not concerned about things like the lot size. It creates more options. And as somebody who, when I was moving from one house in Westminster to my second house in Westminster, it was very, very hard to find a lot small enough, and I kind of wish my lot was even a little bit smaller than it is now. My kids are grown now, I don't need a big yard anymore, and the maintenance is a lot. So I'm not concerned about those things. What my main concern is, is that access point. And if we do have a closed gate there that's for emergencies, I want to make sure that it's not a large truck access. I don't, I really don't want anything going through there except for emergency vehicles. But again, I think that all depends on the comfort of the residents who spoke tonight, and if that is an option that's okay with them. And I absolutely cannot vote for something that gives an HOA that does not exist anymore access to that gate. I do not want to reverse what we've done to mitigate an issue that we had before. And so those are my big concerns. And I agree with my colleagues, if you could lower that one house, that would be great. But for me, the biggest issue is not having that access point, so that way anyone other than emergency vehicles can get through.
Counselor Azadi.
Thank you. And I won't reiterate my counsel's points. I agree with all of them. But I wanted to make sure that the people here, I hope you felt heard tonight. I think you see that we care, and I'm glad to see that iteration is part of our DNA, right? And we are going to, we are going to make sure that this works, and Marcus is a really smart guy, and his team, and fire, and the public, I think you can all work on this solution together and come back and get this approved. So thank you.
Mayor, if I could.
City Attorney.
Thank you. I apologize for interjecting, but I'm asking on behalf of staff whether this motion provides clarity to the parties involved? And a simple motion?
I was getting ready to make sure everybody agrees to what is on my list here.
Okay. So my question, just if it would, might stimulate some discussion, right now the motion is to remand to planning commission. And I'm wondering if it might make it a little more clear to the community, if council has specific things that should be considered when the project is, if it's to be remanded to the planning commission, is it to redesign neighborhood connections or access points? Just a question. If there's a direction that would go with the potential remand from council?
Go ahead. Okay. Here, sorry, here's what I heard. The language for the HOA about the gate and what changes can be made, can't be made, you just want it really clear who uses that, how it's used, when it can be used, and have it written so they can't change things that were intended. Access points, I heard everything from the gate to access points on Bradburn to be, at least to look at. And alleys, that's a big one for me. You know, it's hard to, just from what we get in these plans, because it's not an actual house that you see. You don't see where the front yards or backyards are, whatever. So you have to think with that, with that, those streets, the back alleys getting into these places to get to their garages, even if they had another foot or so on each side to make, I mean, I don't know what the magical piece is, but I'd love for somebody, for the crew, if they're going to be looking at all of this, to really look at that. And I don't care if they look at some other sites, especially with the grade and stuff. 25% grade is huge, and 12% is not so nice, but we have that all over the city, and we see what works and what doesn't work. So anyway, the main things I heard was the HOA language about that gate, and who really is going to monitor, be in charge of all of that and make those decisions so that it can't be changed from what this body ends up deciding. Access points, whether that's on Bradburn or, and/or the gates, or gate, and then the alleys, and viability over maintenance. I never heard where guest parking is in here. And you know, I believe people have baby showers, weddings, Thanksgiving, Christmas, Easter, St. Patrick's Day, New Year's Eve parties, and more than one or two people usually come. So does that give enough definition?
Can I propose?
Yeah.
Truncate that a little bit. So remanding to the planning commission to, one, evaluate a potential redesign of access points, and two, to provide clarity on access and management of the gates. Trying to be, I'm trying to.
I think it's good. I just think that we need to be clear that part of what we're trying to accomplish is not allowing through traffic that we stopped as a council after responding to the community. I think that's one of the biggest things that I want to do. I'm happy to allow them to look at access points and get creative with what makes sense for them, but I also think that we should be distinct in the fact that we're trying to stop access from anything but emergency vehicles. So however you can say that more concise than I did.
Okay. So. Ensure that, if there is, okay, how about this? Ensure their access to 82nd Avenue is emergency only, and evaluate whether the neighborhood access points can be redesigned to potentially eliminate the need for the alley. Because that's, is that?
Yes, I don't want the alley, but there's 12 things they didn't follow code on this, and I'm tired of us not following code. That's why we have code. So I am for following code.
I would accept Mayor Protem Nermella's amended suggestions with the addition that we additionally would like them to look at those lots at the top for design to protect the view corridor further.
They've got to add parking. There's no parking. There isn't. How do they have people over? Do they have to be the ones that go every place?
We can add that they should look at parking and bring something back with that as well. Is that a clear enough amendment for staff to move forward?
I'd accept that as well.
Seeing no one else that needs to speak, we are, the motion is to remand back to planning commission with the things that we just discussed, and roll call, please. Counselor Ha.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
No.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-1 vote. That brings us to Counselors That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number 24. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 24 on First Reading appropriating $600,000 from the 2025 General Fund carryover to the 2025 General Capital Improvement Fund for the repurchase of Westminster Station RAP project.
Mayor Protem? Second. Spin moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 24. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Ireland?
I'm against this. I think it was a win-win when we sold it, and I have no compelling reason to buy it back. Every time we buy land, we end up, it ends up costing taxpayers either by realtors or incentives to developers, so I'm a no.
Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. Troversially, I actually appreciate staff bringing this back and exercising our right to purchase this property back at lower than market value. I think that it would be foolish of us not to take the property back at lower than market value, even if we don't want to hold on to it. I think also that it's important at this point in the development of the TOD that we at least control the decision on what goes forward because we also could control if we decided to purchase or resell it back on market. So I don't think it makes any sense to not purchase this back. So I appreciate staff bringing this forward.
Counselor, Mayor Protem?
So I'll say yes, and this site is also a very difficult site. And the, because it's a RAP area around a garage that we own. And so having control over what happens there and potentially how we can facilitate a development utilizing our garage, connections to the garage, it just, it gives us, again, more opportunity to negotiate something that is commensurate with our vision.
Roll call, please. Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Counselor Hott?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-1 vote. That brings us to Counselor Bill Number 25. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 25 on First Reading appropriating $498,322 from the WEDA North Huron URA to the 2025 Capital, or General Capital Improvement Fund for the Fire Station 8 project.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
Spin moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 25. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Normella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. We adjourn the regular meeting at 10:18, and we start the WEDA meeting for August 11th, 2025, incorporating the roll call from our past meeting. And is there a motion for the minutes of May 19th? Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of the May 19th, 2025 WEDA meeting as presented.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
Spin moved and seconded to approve the minutes of May 19th. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to Resolution 242, Public Hearing for Supplemental Appropriation of Funds to the 2025 WEDA Budget for the North Huron Urban Renewal Area Fire Station 8. Is there any staff presentation for the public hearing? Do we have any public signed up? Nobody has signed up. It is 10:19, and we had no one signed up. And I will close the public hearing and, uh... Motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 242, authorizing a supplemental appropriation of $498,322 to the 2025 WEDA Budget for the North Huron Urban Renewal Area Fire Station 8 project.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
Spin moved and seconded to pass Resolution Number 242. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to make a quick comment.
Okay.
I just want to thank Manager Andrews and staff for coming up with creative ways to start paying for our needs in the fire department. I think this is important, and it's what, quite frankly, when Manager Andrews got hired and the last tax initiative failed that we tasked you with was to figure out how to start closing this gap. I know we have a ways to go, but I don't think it should go without said that, you know, you're doing good work with it, and I appreciate it.
Roll call, please. Board Member Demott?
Yes.
Board Member Azadi?
Yes.
Board Member Hott?
Yes.
Chairperson McNally?
Yes.
Vice Chair Normella?
Yes.
And Board Member Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. It is 10:20, and we are adjourned.